Good morning, everybody. All right. I think someone lowered my chair. All right. Or I'm just shorter than I thought I was. All right. I want to thank everybody for coming down this morning. I know parking is miserable at City Hall. Um, we are here today to celebrate the accomplishments of the New Orleans Spartans Football Club. Is that correct? All right. So, boys, why don't y'all call up here and sit at the, uh, at the big up front dais. Sam's gonna help make sure you have enough seats since there's so many of you. Nope, come further up. You're coming all the way up to the, to the big desk. We're gonna give you the full experience. We got, we got more chairs coming. We're gonna get all y'all up here. There you go. Now, we got everybody up here. Sam, get some pictures of these kids. So, guys, I wanna commend you for everything that you've done. Um, I'm a recovering high school soccer player myself, except the difference between both of us is I was very bad. So, I'd never had the opportunity to even be on a select team or travel the country. I just was pretty much a goon that slide tackled people in the backfield and got carded, pretty much. I think the last season I played high school soccer, I got carded three times. So, I was like a hockey goon. But I would love for some of you to tell me, from your perspective, what the season meant to you. And I'm gonna give you the same thing I do in every class I go to. If, if someone doesn't volunteer Atticus, then I'm just gonna start calling out names. So, Atticus, why don't you start?
Um, talking here?
Talking there, that's right. Who else wants to help? Okay, tall guy, you're also helping him, come on. Excuse me. I noticed the tall guy was like, wait, I'm the tall guy, you're the tall guy. All right, so tell me how the, what the season meant to you.
I'll start, I'll start. Um, um, it was just a lot of fun to be with my boys, just playing soccer and to win a championship on top of that. Just made it super special.
How was the traveling part for your parents?
Um, it was, it was hard on them and I'm glad they made it work. Cause we had such a good time.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, the season as a whole, I mean, we didn't qualify for the C1 playoffs. That made us go to President's Cup. And then to turn it around from not being able to make C1 playoffs, going all the way to winning a national championship, just, it like made it better out of a bad situation, I guess, but it turned it better.
Well, who's next? White shirt, there you go.
Uh, I think it was really about, uh, having the last season with our, our full team together that, uh, that we've played with for the past three years. Uh, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll take it. Uh, guys, I wanna commend you on your resilience. I know that, as you said, the road to the championship was not an easy one. And I think something that you guys, a great lesson you've learned in this process is, anything worth doing is hard. And it would have been very easy when things were not easy for you guys to just say, we'll try again next season. But as you said, this is your last season with all of you and this team intact together. And you want to have something special to remember, you know, this moment. And we at the city of New Orleans are tremendously proud of you. Um, I have a proclamation for each of you up here for you to take home and get framed and put up with all your other trophies you probably already have. This won't be in the back gathering dust, but your parents will really appreciate it. Um, are the coaches here? All right, why don't you guys come and talk at those, these, these mics back here and talk about your boys for a second? Cause I know you guys have to be very, very proud. If you have any embarrassing anecdotes you wanna add, feel free to throw those in as you see fit.
Just so honored, first and foremost, to be these boys' leader, uh, for the last seven years plus. We got to watch these boys from 10 years old grow from young men, uh, children into fantastic young men now. Uh, they come from a, a wide demographic. And what we've done is we've put a very special group of players together that have, uh, dug deep. And when you talk about adversity, they've gone through every piece of adversity you could think of on the field. And we've done it together. And to see them come out and their parents as well, to experience this national championship for a club like ours is tremendous.
Yeah, so, um, everybody didn't get to see the behind the scenes stuff, the training, how hard these boys worked day in and day out, three days a week, the, the adversity we had to come, overcome games that we, uh, deserved to win and then couldn't win for whatever reason. We didn't play good that day or just the ball didn't bounce our way. So, for us to get to where we got to at the end, I think we would, we were happy with everything. We didn't win those games to win that, uh, that big trophy. So, it was, uh, fun to be around and, and fun to, uh, coach. It was an honor to coach these boys. And it's crazy that we knew about the team kind of breaking up a bit towards the end of the season. So, for us to go and just win that trophy, to win it together was, um, was a, a great accomplishment. It was fun to see. Um, so very proud of this, the boys, the parents and the whole group.
Well, we're very proud of you. There's a lot of Saints paraphernalia around because we're celebrating the Honey Badger on his retirement. And I certainly hope the Saints take a page from your book because the season's not looking that great. And maybe they might be able to pull it out at the end. I mean, I doubt it, but.
I'm, I'm available to coach if, if we need a coach.
They, they need a lot of help. But, uh, boys, I'm gonna come down here, I'm gonna hand out these proclamations. We're gonna take a picture in front and then Sam, maybe we can have them that way so we can get the families as well. Okay, so I'm gonna come down, give these proclamations. We'll turn around, take a picture facing that way. Then we'll bring all the families up and take a picture facing the other way. Okay, that's fine. Guys, just stand up. Family, you can come right behind it, we'll take you all at once. For you, but they didn't get, they didn't get the, uh, the hint. But I sincerely appreciate all the work that you guys have done over the years to make travel possible. Uh, parents, you might wanna come up, while we pull those chairs out and you come in front of the glass? Cause it would be awful to see the reflection of the back of your kid's head, um, covering your face.
Hello everyone, we have one final pre-meeting proc and it is for, let me remind you, I want to make sure I say this correctly. This is for the, that's right, it is for the Southern HIV AIDS Awareness Action Day, which as I recall was yesterday. because this is our, during our regularly scheduled council meeting. So why don't we have all of our presenters come up? Don't count seats. Take your seats.
Good morning.
Come on down. We, we will make more chairs if more chairs are necessary. Come on down. Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming down here today. I appreciate you guys dealing with the lovely parking around City Hall. I want to thank y'all so much for coming today. I love to be part of spreading the awareness of HIV AIDS Action Day. Can y'all maybe share with us kind of like the origins and how Crescent Care is involved?
For sure. Yeah, good morning. Thank you for having us here. I'm Glenn Scott. I'm just speaking on behalf of the New Orleans Southern HIV AIDS Awareness Day Organizing Committee. It's a coalition of multiple agencies, advocates, individuals that are working in New Orleans to end the epidemic of HIV. Southern HIV AIDS Awareness Day was originally started in 2018 by the Southern AIDS Coalition in Alabama. And last year, with the help of our, our great Councilman Eugene Green, we got the day recognized here in the city last year. And this year, we've turned it from a day of awareness, August 20th, to a week of awareness, where we've been doing events around the community, addressing different populations, you know, raising awareness about our health. So, yeah, we're here today, you know, hosting the press conference in recognition of the day. Tomorrow, we're honoring community members, trailblazers, who have paved the way for the day. Including Ms. Gina Brown, who's this year's honoree, who was at the table with Southern AIDS Coalition in 2018 when they created this national initiative. And so, yeah, we're just here in solidarity, representing those from multiple agencies here today. Not only Crescent Care, we even sitting at this table, Ryan White Services, we have folks from Planned Parenthood Gulf Coast, St. Thomas Community Health Center, Tulane University.
We can everybody introduce themselves. We can make sure every organization is recognized today.
Yes.
I'm Sariah Jackson, and I work with the Ryan White Resources and Services Office. I'm the Planning and Engagement Coordinator.
Hi, I'm Grace Johnson. I'm from Odyssey House Louisiana's Prevention and Outreach Department. I'm the Program Manager.
Good morning. My name is Gabriella Cotton. I am Outreach Research Coordinator at Tulane University on a check-in, on the check-in study.
Hi, my name is Haley Marshall. Good morning, everybody. I work for Tulane University, the Epi, the Epi Department as Outreach Coordinator.
Hi, good morning. My name is Alasia Cook, and I work at St. Thomas Community Health Center as the HIV Prevention Coordinator.
Hello, my name is Jake. I'm also at St. Thomas Community Health, and I'm another Prevention Coordinator. Nice to meet you.
Hi, my name is Carly Centron. I'm the Community Organizer with Planned Parenthood Gulf Coast.
Hello, good morning. My name is Latasha Bridges. I'm with Louisiana's Department of Health, and I'm their Overdose Prevention Outreach Coordinator.
Hi, y'all. My name is Truli Pacek. I'm a Community Health Educator with Planned Parenthood Gulf Coast, and I lead the Latinx Outreach Department.
Thank you, everyone, for being here today. I really appreciate it. I think it is not often said enough, but we are a state, when it comes to sexually transmitted diseases and AIDS, we are a state that unfortunately leads in all those categories. And the work that you're doing saves lives. And we appreciate the fact that you guys, though we are obviously dealing with the Action Day and the Action Week, you guys are doing work year-round to have awareness, to educate people, and to save lives. And this council, this city, really appreciate it, really appreciates it. Mr. Green?
Yes, I appreciate your work, too. Many times, we don't focus on some of the positives in our city. And as tough as it is in our city, the fact is, is that it's better than it used to be because of the work that you all do. You've saved lives and you've helped educate. I'm certainly pleased with Mr. Scott, and I want to point out Crescent Care because I have many opportunities to go and visit Crescent Care, but some of you all are there, too. I just want to say thank you for the work that you do. It's important to recognize that we are doing positive work. We're making a positive difference in our city. You hate to say that things would be much worse if you all weren't doing the work, but the reality is, is that that's the case, that things would be a lot worse if you all weren't working with your enthusiasm and your motivation. So I appreciate the work that you do, and thank you for being here this morning, and I'll see you soon at one of the activities.
Thank you. And also, just, I know that there are many organizations, including at this table, that are affected by the federal government cuts, by rescission and the like, and I just want you to know that this council, in particular, this city, we are here to support you. I know that I've been working with Councilman Jeruso to look at some of our existing funds we have that do outreach with nonprofits. We're trying to expand those, perhaps create new ones, just to try and deal with these issues, because the work you do cannot be interrupted by shenanigans at the federal and state level. So we're here to work with you. Thank you. I'm going to come down and bring your proclamation.
Let's take a little photo in the front, everybody.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get started. We are going to get started. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
All right, we sixty-five. But I can pull it up.
Uh, kind of the same, all right.
Oh, got it.
Roll call, Council President Morel.
Yeah.
Council Vice Moreno. Councilmember Jeruso.
Here, please.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember King. Councilmember Green. Councilmember Thomas. We have five members, we have a quorum.
Thank you. First up, we have the invocation by Bishop Bute.
Let us all stand for a moment of prayer. God, how we thank you, how we honor you, how we adore you. We thank you for your presence that is with us in this place. To God, we thank you for the state that you've given us. God, we pray now that as we come together as a council, that you would crown us with wisdom, with knowledge, with guidance, God, and will you give us your peace in this moment. God be with us as we come together on behalf of this city, to God, to work together to make it better for all of the residents who reside here. We thank you that everything done today will be done in decency and in order and be done in your name. We ask these many blessings now. Amen.
I will lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. All right, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda. Item one, we have a communication from Aaron Spears. This may be received. We have a communication from Bryce Solomon, twenty-five, twenty-two, seven, twenty-eight, demo, twenty-one, oh, five, Third Street, Council District B. This may be received. Hearing date set nine, eleven, twenty-five. We have a communication from Cynthia Davis, twenty-five, twenty-three, zero, eighty-one, demo, twenty-six, twenty-six, North Roman Street. This may be received. Hearing date nine, eleven, twenty-five. We have a communication from Cynthia Davis, two, twenty-five, zero, five, seven, three, nine, demo, seventeen, eighteen, North Villaroy Street, Council District D. This may be received. Hearing date nine, eleven, twenty-five. We have a communication from Cynthia Davis, twenty-five, two, oh, seven, sixty-four, demo, twenty-one, hundred, Saint Andrews Street, Council District B. This may be received. Hearing date nine, eleven, twenty-five. We have a communication from Nicole Nelson, twenty-two, fifty-six, Barone Street. This may be received. Hearing date nine, twenty-five, twenty-five. We have a communication from Darnell Johnson, ten thirty-eight, Elysian Fields Avenue. This may be received. Hearing date nine, eleven, twenty-five. We have a communication from Ryan Lozle. This may be forty-eight, sixty-two, Chapatula Street. This may be received. Hearing date nine, eleven, twenty-five. We have a communication from LeCarre Moss Grove, tw- twelve, twenty-seven, Pauline Street, and twelve, twenty-three through twelve, twenty-five, Pauline Street. This may be received. Hearing date nine, eleven, twenty-five. We have a communication from William T. Samra. This may be received and referred to the Community Development Committee. We have a communication from Renee T. Hollins. This may be received. We have a communication from Dan Jeter. This may be received and referred to the Climate Change and Sustainability Committee. We have a communication from Kim LaGru. This may be received and referred to the Utility Table Telecommunication and Technology Committee. We have a communication from Kim LaGru. This may be received and referred to the Utility Cable Telecommunications and Technology Committee. We have a communication from Kim LaGru. This may be received and referred to the Utility Cable Telecommunication and Technology Committee. We have a communication from Seer Catway. This may be received and referred to the Public Works Committee. We have a communication from Seer Catway. This may be received and referred to the Public Works Committee. We have a communication from Romeo Samuel. This may be received. Hearing date eight, twenty-one, twenty-five. We have a reporter, LaKia Collins. This may be received. We have a reporter, Cassandra B. Robert. This may be received. We have a reporter, Cassandra B. Robert. This may be received. We have a reporter, Jonathan T. Harris. This may be received. We have a reporter, Brian Block. This may be received. Three, twenty-seven, Bourbon Street. We have a reporter, Robert D. Rivers. This may be received. Hearing date nine, eleven, twenty-five. We have ordinance calendar thirty-five thousand, one, seventy-one by Councilmember Jeruso. Municipal address, twelve hundred, South Carlton Avenue, zoning docket twenty-four, twenty-five. We have a commu- we have an ordinance calendar thirty-five thousand, one, seventy-two by Councilmember King. Municipal address, ten, zero, one, zero, eight, zero, one, River Road, zoning docket twenty-seven, twenty-five. We have ordinance calendar thirty-five thousand, one, seventy-three by Councilmember Harris. Municipal address, ten, eighteen through ten, twenty, Erato Street, zoning docket twenty-nine, twenty-five. We have ordinance calendar thirty-five thousand, one, seventy-four by Councilmember Harris. Municipal address, ten, forty-two through ten, sixty, Magazine Street, zoning docket thirty, twenty-five. We have ordinance calendar thirty-five thousand, one, seventy-five by Councilmember Green. Municipal addresses, thirty-four hundred through thirty-four, thirty-six, Sheffmentor Highway, zoning docket twenty-eight, twenty-five. We have ordinance calendar thirty-five thousand, one, seventy-seven by Councilmember Moreno. It was referred to the Economic and Development Committee, Economic Development, Special Projects Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance count to thirty-five thousand, one, eighty-two by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance count to thirty-five thousand, one, eighty-three by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance count to thirty-five thousand, one, eighty-four by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance count to thirty-five thousand, one, eighty-four by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance thirty-five thousand, one, eighty-five by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance thirty-five thousand, one, eighty-six by Councilmembers Morel and Jeruso. Budget Audit Board of Review, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance thirty-five thousand, one, eighty-seven by Councilmembers Morel and Jeruso. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance count to thirty-five thousand, one, ninety-two by Councilmem- by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance count to thirty-five thousand, one, ninety-three by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance count to thirty-five thousand, one, ninety-four by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance count to thirty-five thousand, one, ninety-five by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance count to thirty-five thousand, one, ninety-six by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance count to thirty-five thousand, one, ninety-eight by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance count to thirty-five thousand, one, ninety-nine by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have ordinance count to thirty-five thousand, two, oh, three by Councilmembers Jeruso, Morel, Moreno, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have motion M twenty-five, four, thirty-six by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Morel, Green, and Thomas. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have resolution R twenty-five, four, thirty-six by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have motion M twenty-five, four, thirty-eight by Councilmembers Moreno, Green, and Jeruso by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have motion M twenty-five, four, forty by Councilmembers Green, Moreno, and Jeru- Jeruso by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have motion M twenty-five, four, forty-one by Councilmembers Moreno, Green, and Jeruso by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. We have motion M twenty-five, four, forty-two by Councilmembers Moreno, Green, and Jeruso by request. Budget Audit Board of Review Committee, Recommended Approval. This is all matters on consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside.
My caller, Burnside, twenty-two fifteen, Felicity. I keep giving credit to my good friend, Councilperson Green, for making me say nice things in public. He takes me by the arm sometimes. So I will say nice things about number fifty-two in your consent agenda. As many of you knew, I bought property through Civic Stores, so it's very nice to see that Civic Stores is still available for use of people who wish to buy property in New Orleans. So thank you for that. With regards to two other issues, we'll touch on number forty-seven briefly. It seems a little strange that we're only going to be, I don't even have the right words, issuing, I guess we'll use the word, forty-five million dollars in taxable, limited tax revenue bonds. When on number twenty-two, the judgment list is eighty-nine million, and we went to a lot of trouble to originally, a couple of weeks ago, set up something for ninety million. So I'm not sure which half of the judgment list we're going to pay with the forty-five million, but it seems like a rather odd number to be before us here today. And in final commentary of the moment, we will discuss number forty-five briefly. I will say that on the surface, it seems like a better deal than we got with Tulane. And I will say that unfortunately, I don't know the capital budget change as to what was given up. I know that in the case of Tulane, we not only gave up some jury room fixing up the criminal building, but we also gave up several million dollars of Laffitte Greenway money. But it would be nice if somebody explained what the trade-off was as to what we gave up in exchange for getting twelve percent of Wisner. Thank you very much.
I'm happy to answer the last one, which is, I think there keeps on being a misconception that we're sort of giving something up here, given that twelve percent of Wisner is a huge amount of money. And certainly, in the case of LSU, with revenue sources, we'll recoup that money in not a period of tens of years, but within a, within a couple of years, just on the revenue side. That's number one. Number two is, all we did with the capital money was slide money in from the upcoming bond sale to the current bond sale and vice versa. So that's all this is, is moving money essentially around from one pocket and bucket to another.
Thank you. With that.
Councilmember, we have one online comment.
Pardon me, one online comment?
Sure. This is from Rivers Grant. He says, regarding item eleven, on the consent agenda, thank you to all of A, all of the AFSCME members, city staff, and leadership involved in bringing forth the AFSCME local two, three, four, and nines contract, which will make the city a better and more sustainable place to work and live. This contract will pay dividends for years in the form of employee wellness, improved grievance procedures, institutional knowledge maintained, and better services for the people of New Orleans.
Thank you. With that, we had a motion? Sorry. Motion by Councilmember Moreno, second by Councilmember Jeruso. We're by vote, your machines. Seven yeas, no nays. The consent agenda is adopted.
Councilmembers, we'll go to page thirty-eight of the agenda. Item sixty-five, we have motion M twenty-five, four, thirty-six by Councilmember Morel by request, adding a, adding the president of council as a signatory to amendment number one to a professional service agreement between the City of New Orleans and Digitech Computer LLC, and authorizing the president of council to sign amendment number one to the professional service between the City of New Orleans and Digitech Computer LLC. We need to suspend Rule fifty-seven on this matter?
I'll move. Second by Councilmember Jeruso. Please vote your machines. Seven yeas, no nays. Rule suspended, then moved to add to the agenda?
Not to add.
No, sorry, not to add. Bill, can you come up? Just to answer questions if necessary. Maybe you could give just a brief hit as far as what this actually is, because I know that the public would like to know.
Good morning. Thank you for taking this up today. Really appreciate it. Yeah, our Digitech contract is, they're, they're our third-party billing company, so they, they manage all of our patient collections.
Okay. Is there any questions? Hearing that, I'll move to adopt. Can I get a second? Second by Councilmember Jeruso. Please vote your machines. Seven yeas, no nays. It's adopted.
Thank you.
Wait, stay up there, Bill. We have your second one right after.
That's right. Yes, thank you.
Item sixty-six, we have motion M twenty-five, four, fifty-seven by Councilmember Morel by request, adding the president of council as a signatory to amendment number three to the professional service agreement between the City of New Orleans and Acadian Ambulance Service, and authorizing the president of council to sign amendment number three to the professional service agreement between the City of New Orleans and the Acadian Ambulance Service. We need to suspend Rule fifty-seven?
I'll move. Can I get a second? Second by Councilmember Harris. Thank you. Go ahead, Bill.
So this is a contract that we've had with Acadian Ambulance since twenty nineteen to provide ambulances in our nine-one-one system to support our operations because of our staffing issues. And so they've been a great partner thus far in that contract. We really appreciate it. Everything's going great, and we would like to continue that contract with them.
I'll move. Can I get a second? Second by Vice President Moreno. Please vote your machines. Seven yeas, no nays. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you so much.
At the top of page twenty, regular agenda, agenda, we have item one, city code section two dash five, five, one, vendor payment accounting hearing. Finance Department and Procuring Departments presenting all invoices as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Reports of outstanding vendor invoices.
All invoices have been paid. Nobody from the city going to be here for this today.
Item two, legislative grouping demo application, Anala Howard, transmitting demo application twenty-five, one, zero, seven, nine, nine, demo, requiring city council review and approval of the following property located at twenty-six, oh, six through twenty-six, oh, eight, First Street, Council District B. We have, it's a legislative grouping, sorry. Motion M twenty-five, four, fifty by Councilmember Harris, approving the demolition request for property located at twenty-six, oh, six through twenty-six, oh, eight, First Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This motion would allow a demo at twenty-six, oh, six, First Street. This home is being addressed by the Restore Louisiana Program as a result of major storm damage. Their independent assessment deemed the property unsafe to enter. Their findings concluded that the framing was not structurally sound. The left exterior wall is rotted and on the verge of collapse, and both the ceiling rafters and flooring are ratted to the point that they are soft. Given the extent of the damage and the involvement in the federal program to assist homeowners in the wake of federally declared disasters, I am willing to approve this demolition. I have one comment card from Mr. Burnside. Any, are there any online comments?
My caller, Burnside, twenty-two fifteen, Felicity. So I walk by and I look at things and I consider things. I don't walk inside the house, so there were some things my councilperson said that I'm not aware of. I'm aware that the piece of land is rather large, three thousand, six hundred square feet or something like that, and the house is rather small, which is like thirteen hundred square feet. Given that it's a duplex, AKA a double shotgun, that each side's about seven hundred square feet. So again, we have a small building being demoed because it's on a big piece of land, and what it's going to be replaced with is probably a single-family house. I will say that the property looks like it was started to be renovated. It's got a brand-new front door, and then stopped. I will also say that if my reading is correct, which it may not be anymore, there's a homeowner's exemption on that property from a gentleman who obviously is not living in it. So I'm not sure of all the details, but I can say that I regret that small housing is disappearing from our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've moved. I need a second. Councilmember Jeruso, second. Six yeas. Thank you.
We have legislative grouping, item four and five. HDLC of T. Sims' favorite manager, T. T. E. C. S. Ventures LLC, requesting to appeal the historic district landmark commission of denial for a demolition application for property located at fifteen through seventeen Cromwell Place. We have motion M twenty-five, four, seventy-seven by Councilmember Jeruso, granting the applicant's request for property at fifteen, seventeen, fifteen through seventeen Cromwell Place, and the decision of the commission is reversed.
Mr. Favreau, I know you're excited, but the way this typically works is we let HDLC make their presentation first. I get the comment cards. Do those. No, I, I understand the exuberance. Yeah, absolutely. I totally get that. Ms. Burke?
Thank you. FEMA survey research estimates fifteen Cromwell Place was constructed from nineteen twenty to nineteen thirty. However, the eighteen ninety-six sandborne map has a building of a similar footprint facing Calhoun Street. An overlay from Google Maps was done on the eighteen ninety-six sandborne map, and appears the building was rotated ninety degrees to face Cromwell Place and shifted to the rear of the parcel when the Spanish Revival-style apartments were constructed. The eighteen ninety-six building has a front bay and a side chamfer that align with the current building. The massing of fifteen Cromwell Place is indicative of the Queen Anne style with its bay window and overall proportions. The building likely received its current raised basement and stucco finish in the nineteen twenties or very early nineteen thirties, when and if it was relocated. If the current building at eight, is the eighteen ninety-six structure, which we're fairly certain it is, it would be the oldest extant building on this city square. An exterior and interior inspection was conducted by the HDLC staff, and at the time of the inspection, the building appeared to be in fair condition. It's a raised basement multifamily building. It's stick-framed, clad in stucco, which is applied directly to the lath. The perimeter foundation wall is stick-framed on a masonry train wall. The roof consists of asphalt chingles that appear to be in good condition and were visible. The exterior stucco did show signs of deterioration, but was mostly intact with some delamination due to water intrusion. The building appeared plumb and level. The windows are in good condition and appear to be functional and possibly original to the building. All exterior millwork appeared to be salvageable but may need repair. The exterior condition of the building would be consistent with a period of demolition by neglect rather than building system failures. The ground floor basement is in very poor condition and is only partially paved with concrete. The area with a slab appeared to have been inhabited, but is no longer functioning dwelling unit. At the first level, mold, wood rot, damage can be seen in the walls, posts, and beams. The upper floors could very feasibly be refurbished and put back into commerce. Staff believes that the building at fifteen Cromwell Place, which provides many of fairly affordable housing units, is an excellent candidate for rehabilitation as a multifamily building. Staff recommends denial of the demolition, and we request that the city council uphold the actions of the HDLC.
Thank you. All right. I have five comment cards. Mr. Favreau, Mr. Hope, Mr. Rooton, Ms. Young, and Mr. Bell. So, Mr. Favreau, step forward. No clares. Getting your demonstratives ready for viewing.
Okay. My name is Sims Favreau. I reside at nineteen oh four Palmer Avenue, next door to the building in question. Good morning. Subject building adjoins our residence on Palmer Avenue, where my family and I have lived for the past twenty-six years. We are preservationists and seek to demolish this building as a last resort. Please note that we only purchased this property eight months ago. It was the prior eighty-year owners who did only minimal maintenance for decades, using it as shoddy student apartments. We purchased it primarily to free our neighborhood from the blight, noise, trash, drug use, and other problems long emanating from this hovel. Then we addressed the building itself. We contemplated renovation, but two architects and a contractor all agreed that, due to the building's prior extreme neglect, a renovation is cost-prohibitive and open-ended in scope. Since its dilapidated condition seemed obvious, we didn't then open walls to further investigate the building's condition. The HDLC's inspecting staff architect even told me that there was likely much hidden dam- building damage and would so state in his report. However, his report omitted this conclusion and instead stated that the renovation of the building is feasible. Since the HDLC's resulting denial, we opened numerous interior wall holes, and the results were even worse than we expected. Per our submitted video and photos, openings reveal extensive termite damage and rot to the structure. We've since been advised that substantial shoring to the building would thus be needed prior to any demolition to prevent possible building collapse. We have the unanimous support of every neighbor we've contacted, twenty of whom, including the University Neighborhood Association and Holy Name of Jesus School, located a half block away, have written letters of support. We had no opposition from anyone at our from anyone at our HDLC hearing, not even from the Preservation Resource Center. Our neighbors and the Holy Name School folks, whose lives have long been adversely impacted by this blighting building, all want to see it gone. Please allow us to remove it and turn the site into welcome neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Favreau. Mr. Hope? Then Mr. Rooton, then Ms. Young, then Mr. Bell.
Good morning. My name is John Hope, and I'm a retired banker, and have lived in this neighborhood for eighteen years and about as close to anybody as other than the Favros to the house in question. I'm here to please ask for your approval to demolish this house. As a banker, forty years as a banker, I've had a lot of opportunity to understand investments, to understand how people can take on projects that make sense or sometimes don't make sense. And I have to tell you, my conclusion on this project is that no one should step up and do anything in terms of trying to turn it back into a livable structure. The only logical conclusion in my mind is that the neighbors who are most affected by it, the Favros, who are willing to take the property, take down the building, and restore the property to constructive, productive use for our neighborhood. One thing you should know, we live in the neighborhood of duplexes to dorms. No one has tried to buy this building to turn it into a bigger rental property like they have in multiple other locations in the neighborhood. There has to be a reason why the investors don't want to own this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hope. Mr. Rooton?
Good morning. Thank you, councilmembers. I'm a neighbor to the Favros and to the property, and I'm here to advocate for the demolition of this building. It's not historic, in my opinion. I view it as unsafe, decrepit, and an eyesore that brings down the surrounding neighborhood. I appreciate the perspective to preserve what's historic in New Orleans and in our neighborhood, but I don't see any architectural or cultural significance of this property. I think what we have here is rot, decay, and danger, and so I would advocate that we demolish this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
Pardon my delay in getting to the podium. I had a knee surgery about a week ago, and if Dr. Finney ever heard I was not using this walker, I'd be in big trouble. My name is Laurie Young. I'm an attorney with Adams and Reese Law Firm down the street, but I am here today in my capacity as the president of the University Neighborhood Association, in which this home or apartment complex is located. While there are many, many older buildings in the UNA footprint that are renovated, this is not one that merits it. Most of the other renovations, you can keep the external features of the house and make it a beautiful place to live in, but through the, this particular property is blighted. It has been an unsightly blight to our neighborhood with attendant garbage, parking nuisances for decades when it was operating as a place that mainly students lived, and it is an eyesore and a hazard. As the UNA president, I get calls, texts, and emails from a lot of people if there's an issue. Some are good, some are bad, but we work through and address them all. I did not get any that object, any call, text, email, stop me on the street, saying that they were against the demolition of this property. Everyone in the footprint of UNA knows the blighted condition. We believe, UNA believes, that the demolition of the building would improve the aesthetics, eliminating this unsightly blighted building. It would improve the quality of life in our neighborhood by eliminating illegally parked cars and other such items, and it would increase the green space because Mr. Favreau is...
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Bell, do you wish to speak?
Good morning. My name is Michael Bell. My address is seven five five Camp Street in New Orleans. I'm an architect of thirty-eight years, and I have assessed the existing building at fifteen seventeen Cromwell. Building's condition is extremely poor. It has obviously been subject to many, many years of water intrusion with minimal effort to prevent it. That has resulted in the extensive moisture and termite damage and mold that we would expect. There is no time to enumerate all of the structural problems and failures, but after the HDLC meeting, I returned with the applicant to open up walls and floors to see further just how bad things were. The building's condition is much worse than expected and is a public safety hazard. Termites have destroyed the building's structural integrity. In addition to its terrible condition as it stands, the building has been altered in egregious ways. The two-level side porch was enclosed to grow the building with no regard for the building's original architectural character. As a result, inside floor levels changed by two to three inches when stepping from one room to the other. The building's past owners removed the front porch and replaced it with a lean-to wood and corrugated metal shed. The base-shaped wall at the front of the building has been devoured by termites and must be taken down. As described by the HDLC when it was built, this building looked nothing like it does today. It would make no economic sense to invest in this property that is so far gone and has no architectural value. I'm very pro-preservation, but on occasion, demolition is appropriate. I strongly urge you to approve the demolition of the structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, at the invitation of the Favros, I toured this house myself, and the nicest thing I can say about it is it's a dump. And having just dropped off my own college-age daughter, I would not want either one of my kids living in a place like this. The floor is dipped in places, most of the plaster is missing, there's evident water damage, as was noted, and as you can see, once you open up the walls, it's even worse than what can be seen with the eye. Another reality here, and I know this has come up in other HDLC contacts, is do we allow to have demolition by neglect, and how does that affect people? But I think, as Mr. Favreau said, this is a property that they just recently acquired. All the damage that happened long predated them, so they are not irresponsible actors who allowed this property to fall into disrepair. Furthermore, as Mr. Hope noted, this is in a highly residential area, and there has been the influx of either doubles to dorms or student housing, might I add, higher-end, and not something that would make this area ripe for affordable housing or other types of developments. I don't take this decision to demolish lightly, but in light of the fact that the Favros didn't order the property for the decades leading up to this, the condition that the property is in, and where it is located, and the fact that so many of the neighbors who are both here today and have written to us, including the neighboring Holy Name, support the demolition, I'm going to move to overturn the decision of HDLC pursuant to M twenty-five four four seven. Second by Councilmember Green. Seven yes, no nays. Thank you.
At the bottom of the page, item six, we have legislative grouping for item six and seven. HDLC appeal of Michael Moore, Beast Boat Construction LLC, Homesmore Realty South, requesting to appeal the HDLC's decision of denial for demolition application for property located at forty-eight fifty-four Camp Street. We have motion M twenty-five four fifty-one by Councilmember Harris, denying the demolition request for property located at forty-eight fifty-four Camp Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Eleanor, will you brief us on your report?
Yes. FEMA Survey Research estimates forty-eight fifty-four Camp Street was constructed from nineteen twenty-five to nineteen thirty-five, but does not appear on the Sanborn map until nineteen fifty-one. The single shotgun building sits perched further back from its neighboring buildings. Sanborn research indicates that a single shotgun has resided on this parcel as far back as eighteen ninety-six. It does not appear that the sighting of the current is congruent with the eighteen ninety-six sighting, but the massing and the interior finishes are indicative of a building of the late nineteenth century. The building is clad in vinyl siding, presumably encapsulating wood weatherboards. The primary elevation retains little of its architectural elements, while the sides retain typical shotgun finestration pattern with wood trim and vinyl windows. The building is plumb and level and does not have outward signs of wood destroying insects. Gutters and downspouts are present. The masonry piers and subfloor were intact and bearing of the load of the building. At their meeting of July ninth, two thousand twenty-five, the commission agreed with the findings of the staff that the building is an excellent candidate for rehabilitation. The New Orleans DRC and Commission have reviewed and approved renovations and additions to countless single shotguns located in the local historic districts, many of which were in far worse condition. The continued demolition of New Orleans' vernacular, modest building stock erodes the architectural character and significance of our economically and culturally diverse neighborhoods. The commission voted unanimously to deny this demolition, and the HDLC urges the city council to uphold this denial and encourage the property owner to renovate the property.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Michael Burnside, followed by Marynell Nolan Wheatley.
Mike Eric Burnside, twenty-two fifteen Felicity. I would like to thank my councilperson for this denial. I did a tiny little bit of research on it, not as much as maybe I used to in days past, but it seemed to me a classic case of a large lot and a small house, and the small house was not actually in bad shape, and the ownership situation was a little bit hard to follow. So I want to thank the councilperson for her looking into this matter and making a decision, and I appreciate her staff's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. Marynell?
Good morning, councilmembers. Marynell Nolan Wheatley with the Preservation Resource Center at nine-two-three Chappahtula Street. The PRC would like to thank Councilmember Harris and Liz for your thoughtful consideration of this appeal. The PRC supports your motion to uphold HDLC's decision to deny the demolition of four-eight-five-four Camp Street. As we have heard from the HDLC, it's structurally sound and a good candidate for rehabilitation. The historic maps of the area indicate that the original eighteen hundreds building might have been moved to its current location on the property in the early twentieth century. Relocating entire buildings, even modest ones like this, was a surprisingly common practice in that era if an owner wanted to make a change. Instead of replacing everything and starting from scratch, it was considered practical and even economical to reuse quality materials like the wood floors and mantles seen in this house. Hopefully, the current owner will restore the building so that someone can live here and it can be used for another century. Also, as a note, the building is in a national-registered district, making it potentially eligible for historic tax credits that can offset renovation costs. PRC can provide information about these tax credits and other resources for homeowners as they navigate the process of restoring an older home, so we hope the owner won't hesitate to reach out to us if they need assistance. Thanks again to Councilmember Harris and the full council for your time with this. Thank you.
Thank you. As we heard from HDLC, HDLC deemed this property an excellent candidate for restoration, stating it is in good structural condition with intact historic elements in the interior. As we all know, it's important to preserve these modest single shotguns to preserve the historic and diverse nature of our neighborhoods. And again, as HDLC noted, similar structures in far worse condition have been rehabilitated. So I want to thank HDLC and their work as well as PRC. I move to adopt. Second by Councilmember Jeruso. Any online comments? All right. Six yes. Thank you all.
In order to speak, you're supposed to fill out a card before the item comes up on the agenda? It's up to you, Councilmember Harris.
You have two minutes to speak. The matter is already closed, though, but feel free to speak. You have two minutes, and make sure you fill out a card afterwards.
Good morning, councilmembers, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I fully respect the mission of the HDLC and the importance of preserving New Orleans' historic homes. However, I am here to appeal their already-made decision regarding forty-eight fifty-four Camp Street, because while this house may contain some original elements, it is no longer a viable or safe structure for preservation. As seen in the photos and videos that I sent to Councilwoman Harris, which I have not seen yet on here, the home has extensive termite damage, compromised floor joists, and a visible lean. These are not cosmetic issues. They are fundamental structural failures, structural failures that require rebuilding from the ground up. Even if fifty percent of the structure were preserved, that portion itself requires substantial reconstruction just to make it safe and livable. In reality, that means investing time and resources into propping up and repairing failing walls and supports, only to replace them again. That is not genuine preservation. It's an expensive attempt to maintain appearances while the structure itself remains fundamentally unsound. The HDLC noted that the home retains some original interior features like mantles and floors. While I value those details, they don't outweigh the reality that the structure itself is unsound. Preserving a few pieces of woodwork does not make the home safe for a family to live in. What I am proposing is not erasing history but replacing an unsafe structure with a new home that respects the scale and character of the neighborhood while meeting today's safety codes. By allowing this, it will provide stability, enhance property values, and contribute positively to the block rather than leaving behind a hazardous building. I respectfully ask the council to consider the practical realities here. Preservation is important, but it must be balanced with safety, feasibility, and long-term responsibility. For these reasons, I ask you to approve demolition at forty-eight fifty-four Camp Street so that this property can be revitalized for the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Given these comments, does any member of this council want to reconsider the vote? Hearing none, the vote will stand. Thank you.
Thanks.
We have legislative grouping for item eight and nine. HDLC appeal of Curtis Lawrence, CEO, Skyward Transportation LLC, requesting to appeal the HD, Historic District Landlords Commission, decision of denial for retention of visually prominent roof-mounted HVAC equipment, inappropriate light fixtures, and decorative metal gate for property located at twenty-three thirty through thirty-two Royal Street and six-thirty thirty-two Mandeville Street. We have motion M twenty-five fifty-four, which the matter is for a certificate of appropriateness. We will be withdrawing the original motion as we have a substitute motion. Substitute motion twenty-five four fifty-four by Councilmember King, granting in part and denying in part a certificate of appropriateness for a property located at twenty-three thirty thirty-two Royal Street and six-thirty thirty-two Mandeville Street, to read as follows. The retention of the visually prominent roof-mounted HVAC equipment is granted. The retention of the inappropriate light fixtures is denied. The retention of the decorative metal gate is denied.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Eleanor?
Twenty-two thirty dash thirty-two Royal Street and six-thirty dash thirty-two Mandeville Street is a non-contributing rated structure located in the Foeberg Marigny Local Historic District. The CVA for the renovation and construction of a new second-floor addition was issued in August of two thousand twenty-two. Currently, the majority of construction work appears to have been substantially completed. However, there are several minor deviations from the approved documents that cannot be approved at staff. The applicant requested retention of three items, including visually prominent HVAC equipment, inappropriate decorative light fixtures, and inappropriate decorative gate. At their meeting of July ninth, two thousand twenty-five, the commission reviewed the staff recommendations and the owner's statement. The commission agreed that the relatively small items in question could easily be remedied and were not installed as approved. The commission then voted unanimously to deny the application for retention. It is very common that when such items are installed in deviation of the approved design guidelines, without approval are allowed to be retained, other property owners in turn install similar things on their buildings without approval. The HDLC is rigorous in its enforcement of the design guidelines consistently so that everyone is held to the same standard. Preserving the historic integrity of the various districts is within the mission of the HDLC, and the guidelines are approved by the city council. As such, we respectfully request... As such, we respectfully request that you work with us in upholding these standards and deny this appeal.
Thank you. You have a comment card? Any comments? I said you pull a card out. Do you have a card? No? Any online comments? No? All right. The motion under consideration is a substitute to the one printed in the agenda. It approves retention of the HVAC condenser units and denies retention of the ornamental gate and sky sliding. I'm approving retention of the HVAC units because I believe moving them now would just add needless cost. Their visual impact is minimal with only tops visible from a few spots from the public right-of-way. However, I'm denying retention of the gate and fixtures to keep things consistent with and help preserve the neighborhood's historic feel with this removal adoption. Seconded by councilmember Green. Six yeas, no nays. Thank you.
Mr. King, Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to point out and just thank the investor, Mr. Curtis Lawrence. He's a young man who I know very well. He's a very successful business owner. I appreciate your addressing this issue, but it just is important to recognize that there are some instances where you see someone who's investing who you might not expect to be investing. I thank you for your support of this matter, but I also thank him for his investment. Just wanted to point it out.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Green. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
At the bottom of the page, we have legislative grouping. Items ten and eleven has been deferred to the meeting of nine-eleven. Item twelve legislative grouping. Items twelve and thirteen has been deferred to the meeting of nine-eleven. Legislative grouping. Items fourteen and fifteen has been deferred to the meeting of nine-eleven. We have legislative grouping. Items sixteen and seventeen zoning dock at thirty-three-twenty-five Aubrey Nola LLC, requesting a conditional use to permit a bar in the CBD six urban core neighborhood intensity mixed-use district on square fifty-one, lot thirty-five or forty-eight in the first municipal district bounded by Andrew Higgins, South Diamond Street, South Peter Street, and Chapatula Street. Municipal address three-twenty-five Andrew Higgins Drive. The recommendation of the CPC being for approval subject to three provisos. We have motion M twenty-five four forty-four by councilmember Harris, approving the applicant's request for zoning dock at thirty-three-twenty-five, subject to two, three provisos.
Thank you. CPC, can you brief us on your report?
Good morning. Yes, zoning dock at thirty-three-twenty-five is a request for conditional use to permit a bar at three-twenty-five Andrew Higgins Drive in the CBD six district. The site is currently developed as a vacant one-story commercial building, and this is a proposal to renovate the structure to create a wine bar. The applicants are proposing to renovating not only the interior of the structure but the rooftop as well. Considering the purpose of the district is to encourage diversity of commercial uses and promote pedestrian environment, staff finds the proposed use meets all applicable standards and it is consistent with the master plan, therefore the CPC recommended approval of the request.
Thank you. One comment card from Mr. Smith.
Yes, good morning, Councilsack Smith, one thousand South Normancy Francis. Just wanted to thank you for the approval today. And just a highlight, this was a very good working relationship with a very limited neighborhood group. There's not a direct impact on neighbors here, but this is one of those great projects to work on because this is turning back into commerce, a building that's been unloved, unused, and untaxed for quite some time. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you to Liz in my office. This motion would approve a bar that will also serve food in CBD six. This block currently includes bars, restaurants, and warehouses, and this location will bring a vacant warehouse back into commerce. With that, I move to adopt. Seconded by councilmember Jeruso. Can I get five yeas? Thank you.
At the bottom of the page, legislative grouping. Items eighteen and nineteen zoning dock at thirty-six-twenty-five eleven-twenty-two OCH LLC, Mission Properties Foundation, requesting an affordable housing plan development in a MU-two high-intensity mixed-use district on square two-fifty-four, lots two-three and four, and portion of original lot nine in the first municipal district bounded by Aretha Castle Haley Boulevard, Calio Street, Barone Street, and Cleo Street. Municipal address eleven-twenty-two Aretha Castle Haley Boulevard. The recommendation of the CPC being for approval, subject to two exceptions and four provisos. We have motion M two twenty-five four forty-five by councilmember Harris, approving the applicant's request for zoning dock at thirty-six-twenty-five, subject to four provisos and two exceptions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. CPC, will you brief us on the report?
Yes, this is an application for an affordable housing plan development to permit a mixed-use development in an MU-two district at the corner of Aretha Castle Haley Boulevard and Calio Street. The site is vacant currently and it's been undeveloped prior to Hurricane Katrina. The property is currently owned by Affordable Housing Developer Gulf Coast Housing Partnership and would be developed by Mission Properties Foundation. They are proposing to construct a three-story, thirty-unit affordable housing development on the site with twenty-four studios and six one-bedroom units, as well as ground floor commercial space for offices. Staff finds that the requested AHPD at this location fits within the scope of the MU-two district as it will bring a vacant site back into commerce with a long-term benefit of affordable housing to the greater New Orleans community. There was no position at the CPC hearing and the commission recommended approval, subject to two exceptions and four provisos.
Thank you. Michael Burnside?
Michael Eric Burnside, twenty-two fifteen Felicity. So I would like to say positive things, so we might as well say that it's good to have affordable housing and that it's good that people are taking all the effort to construct new affordable housing. Those are two good things. And I hope that as the city develops and grows and ages, the affordable housing that is built can be paired up with short-term rentals so that the affordable housing can be paid for. In my fantasy world of a man who's never raised any money, the building could have been five stories and one story could have been short-term rentals and the four stories could have been affordable housing, but then I've never done it, so perhaps I should do something before I make too many comments. But I want to thank the councilperson and I want to thank the individuals who are going to provide affordable housing because this city certainly needs all the help it can get. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. This motion would approve an affordable housing plan development next door to the New Orleans Mission, who will use this property to house graduates of their programs. This is a really exciting opportunity to bring thirty units of affordable housing where we need it most, close to downtown and accessible to public transit. I'm really excited to support this project. Thank you CPC and Liz on my staff. With that, I will move. Seconded by councilmember Jeruso. Five yeas. Thank you.
At the bottom of the page, we have legislative grouping. Item twenty and twenty-one zoning dock at thirty-seven-twenty-five. City council motion M twenty-five two eighty-nine, requesting a zoning change from an SRD suburban two-family residential district to VIP business industrial park district for property not presently zoned as such identified in Exhibit A attached in motion to M twenty-five two eighty-nine and generally bounded by Almanza Avenue, Carver Ramsway, formerly Higgins Boulevard, Press Street, Montague Street, Benefit Street, Feliciana Street, Abundance Street, Cluett Street, and Florida Avenue. Municipal address, multiple municipal addresses. The recommendation of the CPC being for approval. Motion M twenty-five two four fifty-eight by councilmember Green, approving the applicant's request for zoning dock at thirty-seven-twenty-five.
This is a kind of low-key meeting, but this is actually an exciting development for especially the desire community. What we're looking at here is a zoning change that will facilitate the redevelopment of the former Agriculture Street landfill site to a solar energy facility. So something that is very positive comes from what was once, unfortunately, residents living on top of a toxic dump. The Environmental Protection Agency designated the site as a superfund site due to its former use as that landfill, that toxic landfill. Well, since that designation, the site has been the focus of litigation, environmental remediation efforts, and community advocacy. And that's important for me to emphasize, community advocacy aimed at addressing their environmental and public health risks. I am pleased to say that as a member of this city council, one thing we'll always be able to point back to is that it was during this council's term that the residents of the Gordon Plaza community were relocated. They lived on that land for decades. A generous buyout was provided and most of the residents, in fact, with the exception of one, have relocated to better situations. Since the city fully acquired the property as of October twenty-two-four, the zoning change will allow for placement of a solar farm that represents a clean energy opportunity to transform an environmentally burdened site into a source of clean renewable energy. This is a win in many respects in a community that was one of the, was devastated after Hurricane Katrina and because of historic factors, has been really devastated. We're putting much back there, including a stadium that we'll be announcing soon, the multipurpose center, Gail Benson Building, a school, the development of new homes back there, and I'm just pleased to say that this clean energy site is an example of the renaissance of the desire community.
Michael Eric Burnside, twenty-two fifteen Felicity. So in regards to Gordon Plaza, it was a landfill and there was an incinerator there that did a lot of burning and it burnt a lot of wood and a lot of that wood was painted with lead paint. So the smokestack dispersed lead across a much larger footprint than only the landfill. So the idea that somehow the highest cancer rate in Louisiana, if one is honest, the second highest cancer rate in Louisiana, is only due to because of something that is buried in a landfill is not true. The reason that the second highest cancer rate in Louisiana is in that particular census district is because of the smokestack emission of burnt lead over decades. So I would suggest that if people want things to be healthy and if people want things to be fair, that outside the fence line of the agricultural landfill should be tested for lead because I would submit that air does not stay inside of fences. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. And you've been consistent relative to your desire to make sure that the residents who are nearby are not affected. I do want to remind you that there was testing done in that since Hurricane Katrina, an entirely new development was built by the federal government, which is that housing development that is not so far from there, but we'll talk about that one day offline. But at this time, I move for approval of motion twenty-five M, twenty-five four fifty-eight, seconded by councilmember Jeruso. Members, please vote your machine. Five, six yeas, and thank you very much for your support and especially the support that this council has offered this community over the past three and three-quarters years.
At the top of page twenty-six, we have legislative grouping. Item twenty-two and twenty-three, NSCR special exception one-ninety-six twenty-three Jennifer A. Hyde, requesting a non-commercial short-term rental special exception for property located at six-hundred Upper Line Street on square one-thirty-nine. The CPC staff recommended denial. We have motion M twenty-five four forty-six by councilmember Harris, granting the request of Jennifer Hyde for property located on square one-thirty-nine, bare municipal address six-hundred Upper Line Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This motion would approve the NSTR special exception request at six-hundred Upper Line Street. My staff reviewed the CPC report and felt that the standards related to traffic and parking could be met, given the small size of the unit. Additionally, the applicant's neighbor sent in several letters of support, so there is no quality of life issue concerns. Any questions, comments? If not, I will move. Seconded by council president Merrell. Six yeas. Thank you.
At the bottom of the page, legislative grouping. Items twenty-four and twenty-five, NSCR special exception sixty-six twenty-four, Andre Snyder, requesting a non-commercial short-term rental special exception for property located at three-forty-three South Cortez Street on square seven-thirty-four. The CPC staff recommended approval. We have motion M twenty-five four forty-eight by councilmember Jeruso, granting the request of Andre Snyder for property located on square seven-thirty-four, bare municipal address three-forty-three South Cortez Street.
Motion to approve. Seconded by councilmember Merrell. Trying to keep it simple sometimes. If you want a PowerPoint, I'll get one. Five yeas, no nays. Thank you all.
At the top of page twenty-seven, we have legislative grouping. NSTR special exception sixty-seven, item twenty-six and twenty-seven, special exception sixty-seven twenty-four Lance M Ellis, requesting a non-commercial short-term rental special exception for property located at nine-twenty-six North Salsito Street, apartment two-eight on square four-seven. The CPC staff recommended denial. We have motion M twenty-five four forty-nine by councilmember Jeruso, granting the request of Lance M Ellis for property located on square four-seven, bare municipal address nine-twenty-six North Salsito Street, apartment two-eight.
I'll be a little longer on this one. So I'm recommending reversal primarily because the property is point two miles away from two separate HUB-1A zoning areas. It also says it's going to create traffic issues, but it's walkable to Orleans and Broad Street transportation hubs, and this is just part of the walkable commercial zone we all want. Moreover, the owner of the property lives in one unit, long-term rents two units, and wishes to STR the fourth, which is, we're trying to comply with the small multifamily ordinance that we have. This fits that bill. So I've moved, seconded by councilmember Green. Five yeas. Six? Five yeas, no nays.
We have legislative grouping. Item. What'd you think? She voted? Oh, okay. We have legislative grouping. Item twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty has been deferred to the meeting of nine-eleven. Ordinance count to thirty-four eighty-five, three eighty-five. Motion M twenty-three four twenty-six and motion M twenty-three four twenty-seven. We have legislative groupings. Item thirty-one and thirty-two, ordinance count to thirty-five ninety-three, and motion line over M twenty-five two fifty-four has been deferred to the meeting of nine-eleven. We have ordinance count to thirty-five, item thirty-three, ordinance count to thirty-five thousand one oh three has been deferred to the meeting of nine-eleven.
Madam Clerk, I just want to interrupt here for one second. Members, we have deferred this because we've been waiting for a compromise to come about, and I will just say this, my patience is running out with the city because we learned at the budget committee meeting that the administration is violating our ordinance, councilmember Merrell's ordinance, on withholding, and we've been asking them for months to speak with us in good faith, and that has not happened. So I realize there are current circumstances that make it harder to have conversations, but maybe by the end of September or early October, I'm going to ask to move this forward. President Merrell.
Thank you. I'll be brief. As councilmember Jeruso said at the budget meeting, just not to reiterate, but I will reiterate, we found out that the city council unanimously approved an ordinance that prevented the illegal collection of the fee for collecting taxes on the school board's behalf that was not authorized by voters. And what I find particularly disturbing is that their, the position of the finance department is that they were collecting the fee on advice of council while the city attorney was saying we didn't advise them to do that. And on top of that, the ordinance that we passed predated the court hearing anyway, and it seems to be that there is no agreement on the administrative side as to why the fee is still being collected, what is the basis of collecting the fee still, and generally considering what happened with the traffic cameras and Senator Kathy, I think that we are exposing ourselves to ongoing liability as a city, as bad actors, when we have been told repeatedly through a variety of means, this fee is problematic, and yet the finance department still seems hell-bent on collecting it. I would further add that I have had conversations with finance departments in every other parish around us. There is no finance department. There are sheriff's offices that collect fees, and in my conversations with them, of the three sheriff's departments I spoke to, they collect zero fees on millage collection. There are separate fees for collecting sales tax- There are separate fees for collecting sales tax, but those are typically negotiated with the agencies before collection. So we have not gotten clear answers from Finance because they don't break down what part of their collection is millage versus sales tax, but I know Councilman Jeruso is exhausted because he has repeatedly offered, over and over again, to negotiate a reasonable fee for the sales tax collection if they would simply, in good faith, stop collecting the illegal fee, and what we've gotten from the other side of the second floor is silence. That is not good for our kids. It's not good at the beginning of the school year, and as our schools seek to educate our children and pay our teachers, we need to be working together and not have the lack of urgency from the Finance Department to follow the law, prevent us from delivering those services. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We have item 34, ordinance count to 35,117, has been deferred to the meeting of 9/11. Item 35, ordinance count to 35,127, has been deferred to the meeting of 9/11. At the top of page 30, item 36, ordinance count to 35,133, has been deferred to the meeting of 111, 9/11, I'm sorry. Oh, item 37, ordinance count to 35,137, has been withdrawn. Item 38, ordinance count to 35,179, has been deferred to the meeting of 9/11. At the top of page 31, item 39, ordinance count to 35,180, has been deferred to the meeting of 9/11. Item 40, ordinance count to 35,181 by Councilmember Jeruso, in ordinance to ratify and confirm the temporary waiver of certain fees, permit fees, and requirements within and around First Great Methodist Church located at 341 Canal Street, New Orleans, Louisiana, in conjunction with the NOLA Keys Fifth Annual Stop the Violence Youth Bike Ride and School Supply Giveaway Event on Saturday, August 2nd, 2025, at 4:00 p.m. to ratify and confirm the duration and the boundaries of said waiver and to provide otherwise where respects thereto.
Mr. Burnside.
Michael Eric Burnside, 2215 Felicity. I, we're entering a strange age where, quite frankly, money doesn't seem to matter, and I find it very odd because when I was young, money definitely mattered. So maybe it's me that's entering, I don't know, old age or something. But I think that the city should not do things for free because the city doesn't really exist. What exists are the employees of the city, and the employees of the city don't work for free. The employees of the city require healthcare. They require retirement. They require paycheck. So the city needs to start bringing in money because we have historically relied on the federal government. Federal government has given us much money. For all that we may disparage our mayor, she went to Washington, D.C., and Joe Biden gave her money, when quite frankly and quite bluntly, Baton Rouge did not. So we don't have that luxury anymore of a president who will send money to the city. And we need to start gathering in small bits of money here and small bits of money there because we send out small bits of money. No city employee makes a fortune, but they still need the money they get. And I would submit that even a 50% fee is a lot better emotionally, a lot better psychologically, and a lot better ethically than a 0% fee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you. Just for thatification of the public, this was a giveaway for students to receive free supplies, free book bags. There were no vendors on-site. There was no revenue generated, and this was done purely as a nonprofit trying to reach out to kids. I think that as a city, when we have nonprofits that are providing resources to children and to families, resources that frankly the city cannot provide at times, that these are less giveaways and more partnerships between cities and nonprofits. Like I said, no vendors on-site, no revenue was actually generated from this event, which is why I think a waiver is appropriate.
Thank you, President Morrell. Councilmember Green.
I'd like to just add to that, that Mr. Burnside and others, we talk about more people doing events and supporting our youth, and I hope that we can take the positive side of this and say, do you know that the city council and NOR are willing to provide opportunities for waivers of fees? If you do things for youth, we need to be doing something for our youth every weekend and not charging if that's necessary to get more youth activities out there. On the one hand, it's said that, oh, there's not enough for youth to do, but then on the other hand, the city council is saying if you do something for youth, you're not going to have to start off with a fee to the city because we recognize that what you're doing is so important in achieving the goals of our city. So I just want to emphasize that there's a good side to the side of the city saying that if you do something for youth, we're considering waiving the fees to allow you to do it, and I hope that we'll emphasize that side, too.
Thank you, Councilmember. I've moved, seconded by Councilmember Morrell or Green. I thought it was Green originally, and then it came up Morrell, so, yeah. Co-secunders. Need one more? Seven yeas, no nays. Thank you.
Item 41, we have ordinance count to 35,190 by Councilmember Green by request, in ordinance to amend and reordain section 170-3 of the Code of the City of New Orleans to exempt structures granted a conditional use in an OSR district from the prohibitions therein and otherwise to provide respects thereto.
How many people know that Bayou St. John is the home to the first HBCU rowing crew site in the nation? And that's where Xavier University does its rowing, and they're preparing for the future Olympics. Well, this ordinance is simply one that's going to allow something else to happen on Bayou St. John, to permit and erect a floating kayak launch as part of the Willie Hall Playground Complex. The subject site is located on the east bank of Bayou St. John between Imperial Drive and Milton Street, across Milton Street from the new Willie Hall Playground site. This new boat launch would become a part of NOR's Willie Hall Playground Complex, advancing the physical, mental, and social well-being of New Orleansians. That was a very formal way to say that we have an opportunity for a kayak launch, a kayak, kayak launch site that is on in Bayou that is doing a lot right now, and I'm just pleased to be able to ask members to support number 35,190. I move for approval. Seconded, Councilmember Thomas. Members, please vote your machines. Seven, seven zero. Thank you very much.
At the bottom of the page, we have item 42, ordinance count to 35,191 by Councilmember Thomas by request, in ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into amendment number one, to an previous executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and High Five LLC, relative to the installation of a system of water level monitors to provide real-time data to the city to assist in flood mitigation efforts, desire to modify the provisions of the CEA and extend the term thereof for an additional one year, five months, 12 days, as more fully set forth in amendment number one, as exhibit A, and otherwise to provide respects thereto.
What a real opportunity to move into the 21st century when you talk about monitoring water and water levels and effects. This First Amendment to the CEA to install a system of water monitors to acquire data for flood mitigation, there's no fiscal implication to the city, and High Five is a recipient of a federal award and will be providing these services at no cost to the city. NOSEP Hazard Mitigation Director Austin Fieldbaum is present. Mr. Fieldbaum is here. Is there any, if there are any questions? If not, what an opportunity to take advantage of this opportunity. I would move approval. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. All in favor? Seven yeas, no nays. It's approved. Mr. Fieldbaum, thank you for being here.
Item 43, ordinance count to 35,200 by Councilmember Green by request, in ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into amendment number six to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the University of New Orleans, relative to the restoration of the city's infrastructure damage as a result of Hurricane Katrina, including roads, the stormwater drainage system, water distribution lines, sanitary sewer collection lines, and Americans with disability at compliant ramps, all in furtherance of the Joint Infrastructure Recovery Request Program to modify the provisions thereof as more fully set forth in amendment number six, exhibit eight, and otherwise to provide respects thereto.
This is an ordinance which gives a good example of what's going on at the University of New Orleans and our universities, especially in our district that doesn't get a lot of recognition, but it's to authorize the mayor to enter into a sixth amendment to the CEA between the city and the University of New Orleans regarding the restoration of infrastructure damage as a result of Hurricane Katrina under the GIRR program. The CEA relates to the continued restoration of the city's infrastructure damage. The project includes stormwater drainage systems, water line distribution, sewer, sanitary sewer collection lines, and the like. In a nutshell, the city works with the University of New Orleans to continue, 20 years later, address some of the infrastructure challenges that were created in the wake of Hurricane Katrina. Members, I move for approval. Seconded by President J.P. Morrell. Seven yeas. Thank you very much.
Item 44, ordinance count to 35,201 has been deferred to the meeting of 9/11. At the bottom of the page, item 45, ordinance count to 35,202 by Councilmember Green by request, in ordinance to approve and authorize the City of New Orleans via and through the New Orleans Aviation Board to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the United States Department of Transportation, Build America Bureau, and otherwise to provide respects thereto.
This is an ordinance to authorize the city through the New Orleans Aviation Board to enter into an agreement with the United States Department of Transportation to receive Build America Bureau's Innovative Finance and Asset Concession Grant Program funds. The aviation board applied for and was approved for $2 million in grant funding to assist the planning for the development, financing, construction, maintenance, and operation of a new airport light rail system and airport automated people mover. The aviation board seeks to connect the airport through a rail stop intermodal center to the upcoming M-Track New Orleans to Baton Rouge intercity rail system, which will link New Orleans' two largest metropolitan statistical areas to the largest airport within 300 miles. That was a promotion for the airport because, Mr. Burnside, you've taken out a card, and I have a feeling that you're going to say what you've said all the time, but just keep in mind what I just talked about. Come on over to the mic. You've got two minutes.
You've got two minutes, buddy. Mr. Burnside has been taught not to ask for personal privileges when his name's used, so I will refrain from rebutting some of the comments made to my earlier statement about nonprofits and shift to the airport. The airport is very expensive, has a very large employment base, and it provides the City of Kenner with a large amount of sales tax. So the newspaper had a recent article about the people of Kenner, and the people of Kenner are variously unhappy with the airport they don't own. So if Mr. Burnside had a time machine, Mr. Burnside would take us all back to the time when it was decided to build the airport out at the Stockyards and suggest that maybe it should have been built in New Orleans East, and then the sales tax could come to the parish of Orleans. The picture that I saw of the early construction of our airport showed all white people. There was not a single black person in it. So I would suggest that the airport's a problem, not a solution. The other thing I will point out is that our airport has very short runways. Apparently, 747s cannot land there, so apparently cargo jets don't come here, which means that the land around the airport, of which we have a great deal, is not used for commerce or even warehousing. So rather than build more passenger terminals, perhaps we should extend our runways so that they can accommodate 747s, and perhaps we could have cargo jets land here, and then we could perhaps have business, as some of us do enjoy business, and the diverse benefits such activities bring a people. For your consideration, I would suggest that it would be better for the state to own the airport than for the city to own an airport that is not even inside its political boundaries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. This airport is a tremendous asset to our city, and it's important to recognize that not one year does the airport come to us as a city to ask for funds, but they generate significant sales taxes, and yes, Kenner benefits tremendously. There's a new hotel being built in Kenner. Most of the employees are probably residents of Kenner, but at the end of the day, you're right. We can't turn back the clock, but we have to move forward with what we have now in terms of an airport that is recognized throughout the country for its efficiency and also that helps us to bring people throughout the, from throughout the nation, not only to New Orleans, but to cities nearby. But I understand your concern, but we can't turn that clock back. I move for approval. To 35,202, seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Members, please vote your machines. Seven yeas. Thank you very much.
At the top of page 33, item 46, ordinance count to 35,204, has been deferred to the meeting of 9/11. Item 47, ordinance count to 35,205, has been deferred to the meeting of 9/11. Item 48, ordinance count to 35,206, has been deferred to the meeting of 9/11. Item 49, ordinance count to 35,207 by Councilmember King, in ordinance directing the Department of Public Works to conduct a traffic study to evaluate the feasibility and impact of converting vehicular traffic to one-way southbound from the 1,400 block to the 1,100 block of Port Street, and otherwise to provide respects thereto. There is an amendment to this ordinance calendar. We have an amendment to correct the title of Win Fan on page 1, line 3 of the second section after Win Fan, delete the words interim chief traffic division and replace with chief engineer.
I make a motion to amend. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Five yeas.
Wait. Cars. They passed it to me by mistake. Well, this is just amended. Okay, just amended.
Seven yeas, no nays. All right, we have a comment call from Ms. Karen Hausler and Paulo.
Good morning. Port Street's a very odd street in that the 1,100 block is off of St. Claude is a one-way, yet the 12, 13, and the 1,400 block are multi. The actual width of the drive is 16 feet, so with cars parking on either side and two cars trying to go, we have had accidents, animals have been killed, and when you go down to the 1,400 block and you cross over Robertson, it becomes one-way going towards the river. We want some cohesiveness. We now have like people in semis, you know, avoiding the lights on Franklin, and they come down our street, they take down branches, they scrape carts. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, council members. My name is Paulo Stephen Denise. I reside at 2635 Urquhart, which is on the corner of Port Street, and I'm a very close neighbor of Mrs. Hausler. I've been there for almost three years, and I've noticed several accidents, and the problem seems to be that the street is way too narrow for two-way traffic. On the other side of Clayburn, Port Street runs southbound towards St. Claude, and on the opposite side, on the river side, I mean, yes, on the south side, it runs towards St. Claude as well, northbound. So that means that Port Street ideally should run to St. Claude in both directions. I myself, at one time, about two years ago, was almost run over by the two-way traffic because you literally have to go onto the shoulder for two cars to pass at one time, and I've noticed it's been a serious safety consideration that if it were a one-way street southbound, it would be better for quality of life, for people being able to park without being, you know, running the risk of being run over and getting a door taken off when you open your door. So I hope that DPW can do a traffic study on this and make it happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I make a motion to adopt as amended. Seconded by Council President Morrell. Six yeas, no nays.
On page 34, item 50, ordinance count to 35,208 by Councilmember King, in ordinance directing the Department of Public Works to conduct a traffic study to evaluate- to conduct a traffic study to evaluate the feasibility and impact of converting vehicular traffic to one-way eastbound from the sixteen-hundred block to the seventeen-hundred block of Irish Street and otherwise to provide respects thereto. There's also an amendment to this ordinance calendar, an amendment to correct the title of Winfan. On page one, line three of the second section after Winfan, delete the words interim chief traffic division and replace with chief engineer.
Thinking about a curric- Make a motion to adopt, sorry, motion to amend the amendment, seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Vote your machines. Five, six yays, no nays. All right, make a motion to adopt as amended. Seconded by Councilmember Harris. Six yays, no nays, thank you.
Councilmember Jeruso.
Yeah, members, as we all know, items fifty-one and following are being deferred at the request of the administration. They have asked that we not vote on any of these pay plan amendments until their staffing study is complete. Councilmember Green has raised the issue repeatedly of when that is going to happen. The reason I raise this now is because the council had funding issues for staff that it wanted to address, and the administration prevented that from happening, asking why we don't explain why all civil service requests have been deferred since January. I want to chalk that up to a lack of ignorance, but the fact that it's a lack of ignorance is an issue. This is coming from the administration to us, and we are doing exactly what you want us to do.
Oh, what?
If it is being punitive, this is a sore subject, and I don't understand why you want to fight with the body who has the money. So let's all do better, and let's just get this fixed. And we are cooperating with the administration by deferring these motions that they've asked us to do. Thank you.
Item fifty-one, motion line over, M twenty-five one eighty-two has been deferred to the meeting of nine eleven. Item fifty-two, motion line over, M twenty-five one eighty-three has been deferred to the meeting of nine eleven. At the top of page thirty-five, item fifty-three, motion line over, M twenty-five one eighty-four has been deferred to the meeting of nine eleven. Item fifty-four, motion line over, M twenty-five one eighty-six has been deferred to the meeting of nine eleven. Item fifty-five, motion line over, M twenty-five one eighty-seven has been deferred to the meeting of nine eleven. At the top of page thirty-six, item fifty-six, motion line over, M twenty-five one eighty-nine has been deferred to the meeting of nine eleven. Item fifty-seven, motion line over, M twenty-five two thirty-five has been deferred to the meeting of nine eleven. Item fifty-eight, motion line over, M twenty-five two thirty-six has been deferred to the meeting of nine eleven. At the top of page thirty-seven, item fifty-nine, motion line over, M twenty-five two thirty-eight has been deferred to the meeting of nine eleven. Item sixty, motion line over, M twenty-five two thirty-nine has been deferred to the meeting of nine eleven. Item sixty-one, M twenty-five two eighty-eight has been deferred to the meeting of nine eleven. At the top of page thirty-eight, item sixty-two, resolution line over, R twenty-five three forty-three has been deferred to the meeting of October twenty-third. Item sixty-three, motion, M twenty-five four thirty-five has been deferred to the meeting of nine eleven. On page thirty-nine, number sixty-seven, motion, M twenty-five four fifty-nine by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Morell, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas, authorizing the president of council to execute the settlement agreement by and between the city council, the board of supervisors of Louisiana State University and AgroPulchre and Mechanical College, and Edwin Murray, in his capacity as a member of the Wisner Trust Management Board and as a defendant in the lawsuit style counsel for the City of New Orleans versus Edward Wisner Donation Number Twenty Twenty-Two Dash Sixty Seven Sixty-Five Exhibit Eight. We need to suspend Rule Fifty-Seven for this motion.
So moved. Seconded by Councilmember Harris. Five, six yays, no nays. Mr. Burnside, you want to speak on this item, sir?
I think Mr. Burnside's very old, and he will say thank you very much for the opportunity, and I'll decline and go sit down.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Burnside. Members, I really want to say this, thank you. This has been a long, drawn-out process for myself and Councilmember Moreno, who've been dealing with Wisner since our first term. I just want to stress this. We believe that we have the better side of this legal position and that the city is entitled to a hundred percent of the ownership. But as a result of these two settlements with Tulane and LSU, we now know that the city, at a minimum, if we happen to lose, will be sixty percent owners instead of thirty-five percent owners. And that is a huge windfall to the city of New Orleans, not only in the sense of we are now the supermajority owner of all of this as a result of the settlement, but also that it increases the patrimony of the city of New Orleans, which is all that we want to do. So I thank you all for being co-authors. Councilmember Thomas.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Councilmember, and for the councilmembers who've been fighting for this. I think for the public, Joe, especially as a leader of the budget and leading these negotiations, let the public know in terms of dollars what that means, especially because folk are talking about potential deficits and not having as much money as the city had in the past.
It's a great question, thank you, Councilmember. So there's two pieces to this. Piece number one is, for right now, the trust generates money every year because of its investments. That money has been thought to be between seven to thirteen million dollars annually. To Councilmember Thomas's point, let's take the midpoint of that of ten million dollars annually. Before these two settlements, the city of New Orleans would be entitled to three-point-five million dollars on a year-over-year basis. That's not bad. But as a result of these settlements, we will be entitled to six million dollars instead, nearly doubling what we've been getting on a yearly basis. So that's number one. And then number two, the value of the land itself is high. We have put out a survey to everybody to see what it is. And again, if somebody decides that we should do something different, we should renegotiate our leases, we need to do different things, the city becomes, instead of the thirty-five percent beneficiary of that, the sixty percent, which, again, is a lot of money. So it's a two-sort-of-step inquiry, and really, the most important for us is that it means more money. And I think also, let's not undersell this point, too. I know Councilmember Morell has an upcoming motion, both at his request, but also Councilmember Green made this request as well, that for this year, we increase the total amount of the cultural fund. And as a result of the proceeds we've gotten from settling these cases, we will increase the cultural fund from seven million to almost nine million dollars, which then means every council member has more money to approve to different nonprofit and culture-bearing sources, which in turn means there's more work to be done in communities as a result of this money going to the appropriate nonprofits. So I guess that's a couple of answers. Thank you for that, Councilmember. Councilmember Green.
I just want to emphasize what a good thing it is that the city council is doing. When I look at some of the organizations, such as the Girls Play Trumpet and also Make Music NOLA and the NAACP and organizations that support our youth that we've been able to fund, provide funding to support through the New Orleans Dance Collective, the New Orleans Ballet, so that they can do free programming. That is a great fund, and I thank the all of us, especially the original authors, because it has made a difference. I go to events, and I see happy people because they feel that they're part of the city of New Orleans because the city council has gone out of its way to make some amount of funding available to them that goes along with the motivation that they already have. So I'm just so pleased. And I can tell you just in general that I've read a bit about Mr. Wisner, and I'm gonna tell you that Mr. Wisner wanted this money to go to the city of New Orleans to support the future of our city. And what better way to do so than provide resources for organizations that are out there, especially working with our youth, but then working within areas that are so important? I'm honored to be a part of the council that's making this money available for the right purposes.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Green, and to all the members for your hard work on this. All right, I've moved. It's been seconded by Councilmember Morell.
Seven yays, no nays, thank you, everybody.
We have a motion under suspension by Councilmember Jeruso, establishing, motion, M twenty-five four sixty, establishing the official polling place for the specified precincts within the parish of Orleans for the upcoming October eleventh, twenty-twenty-five open primary, Orleans Municipal Paracal- primary election. We need to vote to suspend the rules to receive.
So moved. Seconded by Councilmember Morell. I need two more. One more. Seven yays, move to add it to the agenda?
Yes.
Can I get a second on that? We'll just voice vote here. Second on that. Seconded by Councilmember Harris, all in favor. Seven yays, no nays.
We can vote on adoption?
Yeah.
If you need to speak on it.
Yeah, I just want to say very quickly, members, these involve two precincts where people formerly voted at Paul Dunbar School. The issue here is that many of those people who voted do not live in Holly Grove, but live in Dixon, and therefore, they have to cross over airline, which is dangerous. And so we'd rather put something closer to make sure that people have easy access to their voting location and one that's safer. So now move to approve. Seconded by Councilmember Thomas, thank you. Seven yays, no nays.
Councilmembers, we need to vote to go to suspend the rules to go to ordinance on first reading.
I'll move. Seconded by Council President Paul Baker.
Ah, well, first reads.
Ordinance on first reading. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two oh nine by Councilmember Green by request. An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into Amendment Number Two to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the University of New Orleans relative to the provision of two graduate interns to assist the City Planning Commission's Bronzefield Division to modify the provisions, therefore, to extend the duration for one year and to add additional funding as fully set forth in the Amendment Number Two attached hereto as Exhibit Eight and made a part hereof and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two hundred ten by Councilmember King. An ordinance to effect a zoning change from an H U R D two historic urban two-family residential district to an H U B one A historic urban neighborhood business district on Square Five, Lot Eight, and the Fifth Municipal District bounded by L.B. Landry Avenue, Lawrence Street, LeBurg Street, and Patalami Street. The municipal address is fifteen twenty-seven L.B. Landry Avenue and otherwise to provide with respect thereto zoning docket number thirty-five twenty-five. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two hundred eleven by Councilmember Thomas by request. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the New Orleans Redevelopment Authority for five years for the public purpose of redeveloping blighted property to foster economic development and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two hundred twelve by Councilmember Green. An ordinance to grant an attachment to ordinance number twenty-five thousand five sixty M C S zoning docket thirty-nine thirteen to permit the expansion of reception facility in an S B one suburban neighborhood business district on Square Twenty-three Sixteen, Lot X One, and the Third Municipal District bounded by Siri Street, Gibson Street, DuPlessis Street, and LaFreniere Street. The municipal address is fourteen eighty-four Siri Street and otherwise to provide with respect thereto zoning docket number thirty-five, thirty-four twenty-five. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two thirteen by councilmembers Morell and Jeruso. An ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one thirty-nine M C S as amended and titled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate funds to the city council to add additional funds to the program established in ordinance number thirty thousand thirty-five M C S and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance count number thirty-five thousand two hundred fourteen by councilmembers Morell and Jeruso. An ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one forty M C S as amended and titled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate funds to the city council to add additional funds to the program established in ordinance number thirty thousand thirty-five M C S and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two fifteen by Councilmember Harris by request. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into Amendment Number One to an existing cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the National World War II Museum Incorporated to extend the term by one year for the public purpose of improving pedestrian walkways along Andrew Higgins Drive, including enhancements within part of the museum operations corridor for the benefit of and enjoyment by New Orleans citizens and visitors and to encourage convention center participants to explore the Historic War House District and the museum operations corridor in the city of New Orleans and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two hundred sixteen by Councilmember King by request. An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into an amendment to the cooperative endeavor agreement between the city and youth force NOLA that will extend the C E A's term for eight months, increase the C E A's compensation, and modify certain terms and conditions within the C E A as more fully set forth in the form attached hereto as Exhibit One and made a part hereof and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two seventeen by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one thirty-nine M C S as amended and titled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate funds to the New Orleans Police Department for the purchase of equipment and supplies in support of covert operations and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two hundred eighteen by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one forty M C S as amended and titled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate funds to the New Orleans Police Department for the purchase of equipment and supplies in support of covert operations and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one nineteen by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one forty M C S as amended and titled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to move grant funds within the Office of Youth and Families from appropriation one hundred personal services to two hundred other operating and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two twenty by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend and re-adjourn ordinance number thirty thousand one forty-one M C S entitled, an ordinance providing a capital budget for the year twenty-twenty-five to effect the following change to the twenty-twenty-five capital budget, to deappropriate funds from the Department of Property Management, the Department of Public Works, the New Orleans Police Department, and the Office of Resilience and Sustainability, to appropriate funds to the Chief Administrative Office, the Department of Parks and Parkways, the Department of Property Management, the Department of Public Works, the New Orleans Fire Department, the New Orleans Police Department, the New Orleans Recreation Development Commission, and the Office of Resilience and Sustainability and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two twenty-one by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one thirty-nine M C S as amended and titled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate funds to the New Orleans Health Department for the purpose of reducing alcohol impaired fatalities and serious injury crashes and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two twenty-two by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one forty M C S as amended and titled an ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty twenty-five to appropriate funds to the New Orleans Health Department for the purpose of reducing alcohol impaired fatalities and serious injury crashes and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two twenty-three by Councilmember Harris by request. An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into an agreement to grant a servitude to an adjacent property owner for encroachments on and over portions of public right-of-way located at the municipal address twenty-four twenty-eight Napoleon Avenue. To fix the minimum price and term of said servitude agreement, to declare that such use is granted in the servitude agreement will incorporate space that is neither needed for public purposes nor shall such use interfere with the use of the public right-of-way to set forth the reasons for said servitude agreement and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two twenty-four by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one thirty-nine M C S as amended and titled an ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty twenty-five to appropriate funds to City Planning Commission for the completion of the transient lodging studying and mandatory inclusionary zoning study and F Y twenty-five fiscal year twenty-five and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two twenty-five by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one forty M C S as amended and titled an ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty twenty-five to appropriate funds to City Planning Commission for the completion of the transient lodging study and mandatory inclusionary zoning study and fiscal year twenty-five and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. That concludes the ordinances on first reading.
On page thirty-eight, we have item sixty-four, motion M twenty-five four forty-three by Councilmember Morell by request. Adding the president of council as a signatory to the contract between the City of New Orleans and the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees Union, Council Seventeen. And authorizing the president of council to sign the contract between the City of New Orleans and the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employee Union, Council Seventeen.
I think we have the president of Aspen here, so I'd like her to come to the well. There's Amanda. All right. We have several speakers. But I want to say thank you for your patience. Uh, I think the council got involved with working with y'all. It might have been the first year we came in. And I appreciate the patience of both you representing the employees and the employees themselves who went through this process. I've said repeatedly, I think it's kind of embarrassing that we have neighboring parishes that are not democratic parishes that have functional contracts would ask me sooner than we do. But I appreciate your leadership. I appreciate your patience. And I know that we would have more members here if they weren't doing the work of the city right now. So thank y'all for being here. Um, is there anything you want to add before I get council members to give their comments?
Uh, I just want to thank, um, all of y'all in city council that have reached out to us, that have worked with us, that have championed us. And I do want to thank the administration for engaging in honest and open and good bargaining with us. I think that we've come up with a great first start for a first contract. Um, of course, as always, this is about the workers. This is about the people that make the city run. It is my sincere belief that if you can open lines of communication, if you can open lines to discuss worker safety, worker abilities, worker, um, just, uh, well-being, you can get a great workforce that can make the city shine. We all know that infrastructure is a problem. I know that's a lot of staffing, but it's also very much about running efficiently and communication. And we, as the union, through this contract, are just very much focused on making that happen. I mean, provisions of the contract allow workers to finally and by contract dialogue with the mayor, the C A O, and appointing authorities. These are things that we've been locked out of for a very long time. And we really look forward to having it enforced by law. Um, but also, we're not coming for anybody. We just want to talk to people. That's all we've asked for. And we are just thrilled that somebody is finally giving us that opportunity, both like the bargaining team from the city and y'all. I can't thank everybody enough. Everybody who've reached out to us, everybody who's spoken to us. Anytime you have an idea that might help city workers, please, you have my email. I've emailed every single one of y'all and your chiefs of staff. Please reach out to me. Please talk to me. If you ever have something that will benefit city workers, that's EMS and governmental employees. Obviously, if you want to talk to the fire department and the police, talk to their unions. But we love them too. But this is just so critical to moving the city forward. I know it seems small and small potatoes to a lot of people, but the thirty-eight hundred people out there-
Um, we're going to start with council comments from Councilmember Thomas down, and then I'll get the remaining workers. Councilperson Thomas?
Uh, first of all, thank you. There's nothing small about respecting people who are the backbone of the city's agencies, municipal, state, or federal government. Uh, there's nothing small about making sure that people have working conditions, that they're respected, and they have the benefits to do their job. and they have the benefits to do their job. We may, as elected officials, we may get a lot of credit and even a lot of blame sometimes, but the people who are the foundation for us, the people who are the foundation for the city are the ones who do the work every day. As someone who comes from a working-class union family, my mother, my dad, the members of my family, I would hope that this is the start of a new, not just the city, a new state, but a new America right now, where working-class people get the respect that they deserve because they're not getting it right now. And this isn't a political moment. This is about what are we going to be remembered as in the future? Do we take care of the people who took care of us? Because if you don't take care of the people who take care of you, there won't be anybody left to take care of this country. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. That's right. Thank you, councilmember Morell, for bringing this forward, and certainly I know that all of the members of the council want to be included in terms of the fact that we are supportive of this. I want to just tell you that I grew up in a union household. My mother and father were longtime members of UTNO, the United Teachers of New Orleans, and so I remember even as a young person some of the challenges that existed for teachers before the courageous members of UTNO took action to enhance communications. Teachers were taken for granted. Their profession was not respected as it should have been, but I remember some of the changes, and I see them now that have taken place. In some respects, we have some new challenges based on what happened after Hurricane Katrina, but I do remember that the United Teachers of New Orleans worked hard to make sure that working conditions were improved. I also talk a lot about vacancies and wanting to fill vacancies at the city. Well, one great way to fill vacancies is to make sure that people work in working environments where they can feel comfortable. We encourage them to want, we want to have an environment where we can encourage people to want to come to City Hall to apply, one where people talk about the fact that it's a favorable place to work. So, I appreciate the fact that the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees is involved with this matter, but I'm pleased to be a member of the City Council where this is taking place. Let's enhance the work environment here, and we'll see all of those vacant positions being filled. Thank you for your work.
Council vice president?
Thank you. Well, we have come a long way. I want to thank everyone who's part of ASME, but of course to our city workers and city employees for keeping up this fight because it really is that important and critical. When we started to really push forward on the right to organize, I remember so many said that we would never be able to get it done, and we got it done. And then from that point on, there was this conversation of like, oh, well, after that, nothing's going to happen, but we keep pushing for things to happen. I appreciate you all constantly being in the fight, making sure that more happens, and the reason why this is so important is because we have to ensure that our city employees and city workers have a voice and that you are being heard and that you feel like you have a voice and no one has the right to intimidate you, to keep you quiet. And that's why these protections are so important, so that you feel like you can explain what is happening in your work environment and let people know so that it can be fixed and not feel like there's going to be some type of reprimand against you. So, once again, thank you all so much for doing this because I feel like this is truly important, truly important as to how we, the City Council, supports our city workers, but also how we, the City Council, really is working and pushing forward to lift the morale of our workers as well, which is so key and critical. So, thank y'all so much. Appreciate you.
Councilmember King?
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. You know, honestly, I think a lot of the councilmembers up here do come from union families. My father was a steelworker, member of the Steel Workers Union, my mother a member of the Federal Workers Union, and I just know how important it was for her to be able to report conditions and issues to her union reps in order to have those negotiations go on. I also know that we have dedicated city workers who are out there all hours of the day and night trying to push the city forward, and you don't get enough praise for the work that you do. Even right now, we have some people over at Two Hundred Curran de Let checking out conditions there that are heinous for the residents that are over there, and I can tell you that one member of Healthy Homes has been texting me day and night just about it, so that just shows the dedication, not only to his position in the city, but to the people who are citizens of the City of New Orleans. So, I just want to thank you. I am here for you. I'll be here for another four years, so whatever you need, my door is always open. So, thank y'all.
Councilmember Russo?
Well, I just want to say thank you for working on this. I mean, and I know a lot of times people feel like it's hard to navigate government. You're the one who makes government work. We need people to do the things, and the people who are in this building are doing that, and I think I'll echo maybe sentiments councilmember Green makes all the time. If you don't have the people, the work isn't going to get done, and I'd like to acknowledge the fact that you brought up the administration, the fact that they're working with you on this, and that for the time being at least, it feels like this is in a good place and that everybody's worked well together. Thank you all for all of your hard work.
All right. Councilmember King?
I was caught off-guard earlier, and I sat down and passed the mic to him. I just wanted briefly, I want to state what's already been stated, other than to just thank you for your hard work making our city better for our workers. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Jamal Otis. Am I pronouncing that correctly? I'm not pronouncing that correctly. All right. Making sure.
Well, I am, my name is Jamel.
Jamel. There you go. Jamal Otis.
I am the union organizer and representative with Council Seventeen, who have been working diligently with Local Twenty-three Forty-nine. I just want to say thank all of you. I have worked tremendously with just about everyone on the panel, not just in the community work and also city government, but our community. So, hats off. This is a memorial moment for me. Helena, we work together with SEIU. So, right now, for council, for Local Twenty-three Forty-nine, and for city government and EMS, we appreciate the work that the administration gave us, togetherness, and we look forward to continuing this work moving forward. Thanks, City Council.
Thank you. Zuri McCormick, followed by Michael Burnside.
Good afternoon. My name is Zuri McCormick. I'm a generational New Orleanian on both sides. I'm a civil servant, and I am a proud member of ASME Local Twenty-three Forty-nine. I would like to thank the City Council for its support of unionized labor here in the City of New Orleans. We know that in the history of the United States, unionized labor has been instrumental in the economic, technological, and industrial growth of many cities. It is my desire to see a continued cooperation with the City Council. It is the overall goal of ASME to ensure that not only civil workers of New Orleans' voices are heard, but that we also have a seat at the table for the betterment of this city and its residents. It is my personal goal that with the joint efforts of the City Council and ASME, that we create an environment that civil service in New Orleans is the best place for growth and opportunity for the citizens of New Orleans, that civil service can showcase their love and pride for this city through their work and not face mismanagement, discriminatory practices, unsafe working conditions, and supervisory harassment. Again, I would like to thank this council. You've done what they said was impossible to do, and you have provided cooperation with us. So, I, from the deepest sincerity of my heart, I just want to say thank you. My name is Zuri McCormick, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Burnside?
Michael Eric Burnside, Twenty-two, fifteen, Felicity. So, once upon a time, I was a teacher, and once upon a time, I belonged to a union, and I went to high school when I was talking to kids. And the long story short is, at a certain point, I lost them because I had what they didn't have. I had security. I had health care. I had retirement. I had safety. I had a good job. And sadly, they and their parents didn't have that because they were, shall we say, socio-economically disadvantaged. I only have a minute and a half left, so I'll just say that unions can become corrupt. My grandfather, Burnside, was a union member. He's a union member of a coal, coal union up in West Virginia. My father was a union member. He was a union member of a carpenter's union out west. Unions are no more subject to somehow or another avoiding mismanagement than any other human activity, including its churches and including its governments. So, I would warn the members of the union to watch the union as much as they watch anybody and everybody else. I'll point out that the city has a hiring freeze, and it's had a hiring freeze for several months, and this is public knowledge. I'll point out that the city does not do inflation adjustment. It does not do inflation adjustment for its salary schedules, and so anytime you get a raise, inflation will eat it away. And I'll point out that we have delayed and deferred various pay raises for an extended period of time now. I sent out an email to the Juvenile Justice Center where I laid out everything very neatly to all of my seven representatives. The delay for the Juvenile Justice Center pay raises cost the city thirty-six thousand dollars annually, three thousand dollars a month. So, if you really want to respect the workers, I suggest that you start paying them.
Thank you. In closing before the vote, I just wanted to kind of do a little bit of a callback. Amanda, I'll see if I see your head's back hidden. Okay. I think our first experience working together was the DPW investigation, and that was a disturbing but enlightening process in what workers in the city encounter and what they deal with, and I highlight that because that was a union doing its job when there wasn't even a contract. That was a union meeting with councilmembers, exposing harassment in a hostile work environment, and working with this council without a union contract because the workers came first. And I sincerely appreciate the work that you guys have done at ASME with making sure you're advocating for the workers even as the contract itself wasn't even in place because the workers always come first. So, I'm happy that we're able to all come together today to get this contract signed. I am looking forward to a more formalized agreement so that there are more protections for workers rather than us having to have extensive hearings to try and get supervisor misconduct put out into the ether, and I look forward to working with y'all. So, thank you for all your hard work. I will move to adopt. Seconded by councilmember Green. All in favor? Missed somebody? Seven yeas, no nays. Thank you very much for all your hard work. All right. I believe now is time for us to go into executive session. I'll move for executive session. Can I get a second? Seconded by councilvice president Moreno. All in favor. Say aye. Seven yeas, no nays. We're in executive session. Seven yeas, no nays, we're in executive session.
All right, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and call us back into order.
She's right behind you.
Hi, there you are. Since she's right behind me, I'll go ahead and do roll call. President Morell is here, I'm here, Councilmember King, Harris, and Jeruso are here, we have, and Councilmember Thomas, six members present, we have a quorum. I'll make a motion to reconvene. Can I get a second?
Second.
Council President Morell, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Six yays, no nays, and we are reconvened.
And Jorge Roseman, are we doing one, two, three, or two, one?
No, we're gonna do one, two, three. So give me first.
Okay.
I'll wait for Madam Clerk to get over to her seat, and we'll read the First Order of Business, please.
First Order of Business: Presentation Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Program. Jennifer Hunt, Domestic Violence Project Specialist, NOHD. Jocelyn Pinkerton, Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Programs Manager, NOHD. Shakia Reed-Green, Air Trainer, NOFJC. Kevin Williams, Air Supervisor, NOFJC. Tyra Pruitt, DV Unit Sergeant, NOPD. Presentation from the New Orleans Department Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Program in partnership with other city departments and nonprofit organizations concerning the 2024 Advocate Initiated Response Program data report. This comprehensive report offers a data-driven assessment of the city's current domestic violence response and highlights both the urgent challenges and practical steps that city agencies and partners can take together to better protect survivors, hold offenders accountable, and improve conditions across the system.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The presenters, you can start coming up to the table. Jocelyn, if you can bring up whoever's presenting, and then Michelle will help you all get settled in on your presentation as well. But, members, what we have today is a presentation on the, really, Health Department and Family Justice Center-driven initiative called the AIR program. And they have their first initial report of the success of the AIR program, and this is about really providing additional services for victims of domestic violence so that they can better navigate through the ordeal of the situation that they are in, from the point of soon after the incident happens to really walking and, really, a level of advocacy and really compassion and knowledge around what will come next for victims as they navigate through this process, particularly if they're going through the criminal justice system, and what to expect. So with that, I will turn it over to Jocelyn Pinkerton with our New Orleans Health Department, and Jocelyn, please introduce the panel, and you can begin with your presentation whenever you'd like.
Okay, thank you so much. So should I introduce everyone up here to start?
Absolutely.
So my name is Jocelyn Pinkerton, I'm the Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Program Manager at the City of New Orleans Health Department. So I'm joined by Jennifer Hunt, who's our Domestic Violence Project Specialist at the Health Department, and Sergeant Tyra Pruitt with the NOPD Special Victims Division, Misty Fry with the City of, or sorry, the New Orleans Family Justice Center, and Kevin Williams with the Family Justice Center as well. So yeah, thank you so much for inviting us to be here. We are here to speak about the Advocate Initiated Response Program. We put our numbers together and developed a report from 2024 that we issued recently, and we're so grateful that that caught the attention of the council because we are really proud of this program, and we're happy to be here to sort of show off what we've been able to accomplish in 2024 and speak about what our hopes are for the program moving forward. So just wanted to give you all some background, the Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Program is under the Office of Violence Prevention within the City of New Orleans Health Department. We run the Advocate Initiated Response Program, but we also do a lot more than that, so we also run our city's Domestic Abuse Fatality Review, and we do a lot of coordination around the city's response to domestic and sexual violence with sort of high-level meetings to coordinate responses, as well as case reviews for domestic and sexual violence cases. We also have a grant to do DV prevention work for young children, and it's really important, I think, that our city's domestic and sexual violence initiatives are housed under the Office of Violence Prevention because not only do we look at domestic and sexual violence as a public health issue, but we also look at it as really integrated with community violence as well. So the Advocate Initiated Response Program that we're gonna talk about today is really a crucial component of our city's approach to community violence prevention and intervention within the larger ecosystem of the Office of Violence Prevention. So what the OVP prioritizes is engaging with families and communities, providing linkages to community-based resources, preventing escalation and breaking cycles of violence, and the AIR program is an important part of this that is focused on domestic violence. So just to review, because I can't give a presentation without reminding everybody the significance of domestic violence and the impact that intimate partner violence has on our community, domestic violence is the number-one reason that New Orleanians call 9114 a law enforcement response. And since 2020, we've had at least 83 people lose their lives in Orleans Parish to domestic-related violence. On average, NOPD responds to over 30 DV-related calls a day, and with numbers so big, it is really important that programs like the AIR program are focusing specifically on responding to domestic incidents. So the AIR program, we started with a pilot in 2022, and the AIR program is an intervention for domestic violence to increase victim safety, provide linkages to resources, and disrupt violence. Really, our objective is that when NOPD responds to a domestic incident, they will, could be a disturbance, or it could be an incident that rises to the level of a crime, they will issue an arrest or warrant or document the disturbance, and then that information gets passed to our AIR advocates who review the police reports and follow up with victims and reporting people in order to discuss safety planning resources and provide referrals. So we're really filling a gap that NOPD just isn't equipped to do when they are arriving on scene, and by following up with victims later, our intent here is to really provide community members with the support that they need to prevent further escalation of violence in the future. So something that I want to note about the AIR program that's unique is that there are lots of other programs like this around the country. A lot of them focus on sort of our most acute, high-risk incidents for follow-up, but something that is unique about the AIR program is that we really wanted to reach out to everybody. So we follow up with people that call NOPD for a domestic disturbance, so they might have an argument, but, you know, no crime has happened, no arrest gets made, but we want to follow up with that argument before it escalates into something that's more serious. And so that's something that I'm really excited about with this program. If I could call anybody in the community who is arguing with their partner, who is having difficulty at home, I would. Because we've been able to work with the Police Department, they can give us that information for victim contact information, and we can have our community-based advocates follow up with community members that need assistance. So I want to get into a little bit of the numbers here, and just to demonstrate how impactful this program has been over the last couple of years. We fully expanded in 2024, and so what, I wanted to go over with the council everything that is included in the AIR program. So the most fundamental piece of the program are those advocates that are calling community members every day. So we have 10 AIR advocates, we're also working on onboarding an advocate that'll be in criminal court when victims appear in criminal court. But then, once we call people, and as Jennifer's gonna mention, we have successfully engaged with over 3,500 people just in 2024, which is a lot. We also want to provide them with resources that is, again, gonna help prevent escalation of violence and is going to provide people with the support that they need in order to improve their safety. So AIR also provides funding for therapists, for case managers, for people who need assistance with safety planning. Another thing that we're gonna touch on is that, you know, civil legal issues are a big underlying factor that contributes to violence in our community, so disputes related to custody, related to property, and so we recognize that in 2023 and funded Southeast Louisiana Legal Services staff additional, an attorney, a social worker, and an intake specialist specifically because we were seeing so many people from the AIR program referred for civil legal assistance. And then another thing that is really important is that we also set aside some funding within the AIR contract for direct client support. We knew that we couldn't call people without being able to provide emergency funds if they needed it for housing, emergency assistance, or transportation, and so that is funding for this program that is going directly to people that need emergency assistance in the aftermath of a police incident. So like I said, we've been able to engage with over 3,500 people in 2024, and a significant number of those people, almost 2,500 of those people, were referred to these services. So this is really crucial that this investment continues in order to do this outreach and then also provide the services that people need, again, in order to prevent escalation of violence and to serve our community with supportive services to increase safety. I'll turn it over to Jennifer to talk a little bit more about details of the program.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. I'm going to lead us through an overview of some of the impacts of that investment that Jocelyn just so well described, and as Jocelyn mentioned, we've had a lot of success in meeting the ultimate AIR goal of reaching victims and linking them to resources. So in 2024, we were able to contact, successfully contact, 45% of individuals whose report had contact information included, and of those individuals, of those 3,500-plus individuals, 68% of them accepted one or more referral to a resource. And I think maybe what's more important to highlight is only 2% of those people who were contacted successfully declined services from AIR, and that really highlights, it speaks to the demand from the community and the need in the community for advocate services. And I just want to highlight our AIR advocates are in the building today, if they want to wave. So not only is AIR meeting those goals, they are reaching out to victims, they are successfully reaching them, and they are referring them into the community, but what we're also doing with AIR is we're learning a lot about the way domestic violence functions in our community, and then we're developing intervention and prevention strategies that are catered to that information that we're learning. And so I'm gonna lead us through some of the things that we've learned and how we've created strategies around those. So the first thing I want to talk about is precursors, and precursors are events that lead into a domestic violence incident. By looking at precursors, we can really understand what were those preceding events that led up to that incident and potentially prevent those incidents from happening in the future. And so what we learn from AIR is the top three reasons why people call 911 for DV-related concerns is because a verbal altercation or unwanted contact or civil legal dispute has occurred, and they are reaching out to 911 for help. So working with city council, we've really looked at how we can take this information and invest in new responses, and so I'm gonna take us through some of those responses. Uh-oh, there we go. Next one. So as Jocelyn was saying, early intervention is central to the way that the Office of Violence Prevention works to prevent violence in our community, and it's central to the way that we see preventing domestic violence. And so since 41% of verbal alter, sorry, 41% of incidents included a verbal altercation, it really speaks to the importance of early intervention in conflict resolution programs. And so that's why we, a core tenet of the work that AIR does, is reaching out to people before they've experienced a crime by reaching out to those domestic disturbances. And I'll note, that's something that makes AIR unique in the nation, this is pretty unusual to also reach out to domestic disturbances before those crimes have escalated, or excuse me, before those incidents have escalated into violence, because we're hoping to prevent violence before it happens. Another major finding that we had is in 17% of cases, unwanted contact was the preceding event to a domestic violence incident, and we know that civil and criminal protective orders are vital tools for preventing future unwanted contact and preventing offenders from continuing harassment and abuse. And so that is why, as Jocelyn mentioned, we have created an AIR contact in Criminal District Court, that advocate is here today, and she will be moving into that position soon in criminal court, to ensure that we are helping victims to navigate court processes and overcome barriers that might prevent them from securing or maintaining those protective orders that we know are really important for empowering law enforcement to prevent future unwanted contact. And then in 10% of incidents, we see civil legal issues are at the base of that. What are civil legal issues? Those are custody disputes, those are financial disputes, property disputes, and really, unfortunately, law enforcement can't offer meaningful solutions in those, long-term solutions in those situations. They can ensure safety, they can de-escalate the situation, but civil legal issues require civil legal solutions, and so that's why investing in civil legal services is a vital aspect of the AIR program, and that's why we really want to highlight the work that Southeastern Louisiana Legal Services does, because their DV unit is a really vital aspect of our prevention, our strategies. So as well as learning about the preceding event, we've also learned from AIR a lot about the lethality factors or the risk factors that are associated with domestic violence incidents in New Orleans. Why is this important? Lethality assessments are used by law enforcement, advocates, medical professionals to inform safety planning, to really think about how we keep victims safe, but they can also be used to inform strategies. So, and that's what we use. So the AIR advocates speak with victims and reporting persons, they read police incident reports, and they review historical records to determine risk factors, and then they use those risk factors to both safety plan, but also for us as the Health Department to then inform how we are intervening in domestic violence incidents. And I'm gonna talk about some of those, a couple of those today. I also want to note that as the Domestic Abuse Fatality Review Coordinator, it became very clear that many of the risk factors, the lethality factors that AIR is identifying through these reports are mimicked in our domestic abuse fatalities that I, that I and the team review on an annual basis. And so we know that these risk factors, if uninterrupted, and do lead to fatalities in our community. So I'm gonna highlight three of those. One of them is really a unique finding or an unexpected finding that we came through AIR, and that's the nebulous of risk factors that we kind of associate with the patterned behavior of domestic violence, so repeat offenses, a history of avoiding arrests, a history of escalating violence, these are the things that we really kind of see around domestic violence, because domestic violence continues to escalate and happen if uninterrupted. And so by reviewing not just current incidents, but also the historical documentation from these events, AIR advocates were able to treat DV as a pattern, and then were able to start identifying repeat offenders, incidents with high potential for lethality, and also particularly vulnerable victims. And from that, what they realized is, wait a second, we're a really crucial hub of this information, and we can use this information to help coordinate system responses, and so that's what they did. So the Health Department So the Health Department worked with AIR to develop a high-risk domestic violence protocol that actually coordinates the District Attorney's Office, community advocates, NOPD's DV unit, all around when an incident or an individual is flagged, we create a coordinated response to make sure that we're really attacking that as a multidisciplinary agency response. We also have noticed that firearms are central to domestic violence incidents and domestic violence fatalities in Orleans Parish. And I want to say that OVP really recognizes gun violence as a public health, health crisis, as Jocelyn said, and many of our programs work together to try to intervene in a kind of interdisciplinary way. So we want to highlight that we do have a-
Let me stop you real quick. So we're out of time for our order of business, but if members don't mind, I'd like to add just another five minutes, if we, so we can make sure we wrap up this presentation. With no objection. Thank you.
So I will wrap on these items, and just say, we are also developing strategies and protocols around other risk factors, like our firearm and our strangulation protocol. And really, more than anything, as much as we want to highlight the successes that we have as agencies, we also want to highlight the success of our, our survivors and our victims. So I would like to turn it over to our AIR advocates to maybe highlight a success story that they have had with an, an AIR client.
Example of success story, I pulled a case where a young lady, her father appeared at her residence, and wanted to manage to see the kids. Upon receiving that information, our advocate was able to contact that mother, we were able to reach out to her and have her come into the NOFJC. She was also then referred to Southeast Louisiana Legal Services, where she was able to obtain a court order and, and actually get a custody agreement. And the success of that case is, this couple has had no more incidents, so that turned out to be a preventive type of intervention.
Thank you, Ms. Rowan.
Another preventative measure that we are taking at the New Orleans Family Justice Center is, the advocates are able to review the reports and also speak with the survivors. But upon speaking with them or reviewing the reports, they may know that there has been some strangulation, or some note as choking. We have taken that, as Ms. Jennifer Hunt has stated, and we have taken that to another level, because what we all know about strangulation is, that is a possibility for a future homicide involving IPV. So at our agency, we have implemented another step further to take that, those, that information, and provide that to the survivors, and also provide them information to come in early to get an assessment done. Because survivors need to be educated about their medical history and what has happened to their body. Sometimes you won't be able to see what, uh, uh, results of a strangulation after it has occurred. So, prime example, we had a survivor come in, and in the middle of intake, she started having a stroke. Because she was strangled the night before, what, by her partner with a jean jacket, and dragged up the steps. So it's important that we provide that information, because they don't know if they're having trouble breathing, or if they lost consciousness, or may have, maybe having signs of a stroke, or have, may have internal injuries. So we are starting that process, we have started that process for maybe about two, three months, and we have had 65 people to complete the strangulation assessment. Also, that information is there for them, for their future, if they need it for their criminal case. So that's why it's important that we educate, we inform our community on strangulation. That is critical. And that is one piece now that we have taken to another level. And I'm happy to say, our whole clinic is on board, and they are completing those assessments. Survivors are coming in with the information, they're knowledgeable, and they're getting these assessments completed.
Well, I don't want to take much time, but I do work closely with everyone at this table. I would say that the AIR program, their platform, has been beneficial to us, because we're able to see multiple offenders, and that, that are still on it. And he provides me on, on a weekly basis with that update. We're able to notify the violence unit in order for them to go out and to look for these people that have offended multiple times. We also, they also do the callbacks for protective orders, and you have multiple offenders on that as well. You know, and so it's, it's, it's actually gearing up and changing the way that we teach the officers, you know, on escalating charges, you know, when you have a, a person with multiple offenses, on how to charge properly, in combination with the DA's office, which led to me having a meeting with them, because the AIR program is providing this information, and we're able to see this. The program is outstanding because of the early intervention. I mean, like, I told them, that's how you do prevention, by intervening early. And they're talking to, to the victims, and they're coming in way ahead of time, you know, than, than waiting for an actual physical incident to happen. So, but, but they're coming in when the arguments are happening, and they're seeing triggers of where, where things can lead to something physical. So I'm excited about the AIR program, I know we all are, and, and they're very helpful.
Thank you. So that's all we have, we want to stay on time. Thank you again so much, and we're happy to take any questions, or show off in any other way we can.
Thank you, Jocelyn, I appreciate it. Misty, you actually brought up what I was going to ask a question about, and that was that you all are already working on this increased focus on the strangulation cases, because that is what is most concerning. That is what the data shows, as you all have talked about, and national data shows that there is a potential for escalation leading to lethal outcomes.
Yes.
And so, thank you so much for doing that, because that right there, you're not only keeping people safe, you're saving lives.
Saving lives.
And so I appreciate the work of all the different advocates, of course, NOPD and the Health Department, for the work that you all are doing to help protect victims, and on the prevention side of dealing with this AIR program. And thank you to the Health Department for thinking outside the box on something new. Dr. Avagni, I see that you're here, thank you for really pushing on this program, and working to expand it so quickly. Because initially, we were just going to have it, you know, in a, in a couple council districts, but we, in partnership with the council, pushed to fund it citywide and do it very quickly. So it's been a great partnership, and now we just need to keep building upon this, so that we can save more people. Any other council members like to make comments? Councilmember Thomas, I'll just take it down the line.
First of all, thank you guys. As the author of the city's first domestic violence law during the Morell administration, and working with the YWCA, I'm glad to see that we're making improvements. And it was a story about how police mishandled a case that actually got me involved. Though I'm a mere man, I thought that as an elected official, we should be proactive in dealing with that issue. Misty, first of all, thank you guys and your team for the work that you do. Misty, I read a lot of the stuff that you send out, and I, I think if we're going to deal with this with, with the root cause, because you guys have been before us a lot. But when we look at what's happening in this world, especially in our community, in a city dominated by black folk, where our majority population is African-American, we need to deal with, begin to deal with the root causes. Indiana State Senator Vanessa Summers, in her work with Coburn Place, and the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, they write that by intentionally denying black people access to economic opportunities, and the ability to build intergenerational wealth, healthcare, quality education, and a sense of safety, not with government, but from government, systems whose policies increase the prevalence of risk factors for domestic violence. So at some point, we have to begin to deal with those root causes, that deal with poverty and lack of access, and not a relationship with government, but in many cases, protecting black folk from government. The other thing that that study revealed was that 40% of black women, 40% in our community experience some form of domestic violence. And in one of the reports, and I think everybody should be briefed, not just to do this stuff, but understand the impact it has on our community, it says that while the stereotypes suggest that it's women, black men are several times more likely to experience and be victims of, of domestic violence than our counterparts in other races. So at some point in this city, if we want to deal with this, and we should, because the first law we did was several years ago, we need to talk about black folk making some money, having housing, having access to quality education. And we brag about black women with startup, but we don't talk about the fine print that says they don't get the resources to stay up. We brag about the fact that we want black men and boys to participate and not become predators with domestic violence, but we need to understand that, that, that the nation's economic report says that black men and boys are being left out of the nation's economy. So if you're left out of the nation economy, why are we surprised that you see them in your window, or in your car, or in places in your community? So we can have these conversations and ceremonial stuff, but there's a root cause that affects our community and our people, especially in a city that's majority African-American. We need to be as on par with the economy, and respected with the economy, and access to healthcare as anybody else. And if that happens, you'll see a lot less violence and domestic violence in our community. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for the work, for the work that you do. It's so important to work with and recognize the victims of crime and the victims of domestic violence, because unfortunately, as a system, as a society, we often forget the victims of crime. We focus a lot of attention in a lot of other areas. You can get grants for this, and you can get support here, but there's not enough support for victims of crime. And you all, through your work, have made it clear that women and men who are victims of domestic violence need not be ashamed, that there is a source that they can come to, to get the resources and support that they need. I appreciate the fact, as a founder of the organization, Voices of the Victims of Crime, that in such meetings as last night, where the Family Justice Center participated, that there's a larger turnout for those meetings, that people who have been victimized by crime are feeling that they can come forward and let their story be heard, and ask for support and resources. So thank you for what you do. The most important reason for the criminal justice system to exist is to, is to provide support for those who have been victimized by crime, and to do everything that we can to make sure that we don't have victims of crime, victims of crime. Unfortunately, it's prevalent in our community, but it's not acceptable. So at the end of the day, thank you for the work that you do. Sometimes it's thankless work, but it's so very important in our city. The Family Justice Center, the AIR program, and all the others who are involved on that side of supporting victims, I thank you all for the work that you do.
Well, it is always a pleasure to see y'all here today. I know that you guys are often the bearers of data-driven information that really makes us reconsider how we allocate resources, in a good way. I think that we are a city that has shown repeatedly that when we rely upon data, research, and information, that we can move towards better outcomes. I know, Family Justice Center, we've been working together for a very, 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 very long time, on the state level, to try and protect victims of domestic violence. We've, we've picked the big fights, we've fought the NRA, we've done all those things, but when it comes down to these AIR findings, they're so important, because we're gone beyond just reacting to when things happen. Because the state of Louisiana leads the nation in domestic violence. At the time when Helena and I were in the legislature, we led, and we may still lead the country, in spouses, and estranged spouses, and dating partners being killed by their former spouses. And the work that you guys are doing to help us uncover the data to identify this type of behavior early, or to identify what leads this behavior, and really trying to address it before we get to the point where we have to have that intervention, that should not be understated. Because when NOPD is on the scene, that's when it's too late. So I appreciate the tremendous amount of data you guys are getting, I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing, and I look forward, as a council, working with you to see how we can implement strategies using this data to have better outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, it was very informative, especially the precursor events. I didn't know, you broke it down very, very plainly, so thank you for that. And as always, keep up the great work, and continue to help those who need help and keep our city safe. Thank you.
Well, I won't keep you guys here much longer. I know we have, we have a famous star behind you that you all want to say hello to. But thank you so much for all the work that you do and continue to do, the partners, NOPD, Family Justice Center. Health Department is killing it. When you think about this program, the Mobile Crisis Intervention Unit, all of the things that you do that really are based on data and collection of data, and then you're giving it back to us, this is what I wish every single department would do, so that we can make decisions that actually have impacts on our citizens. So that's what you're doing, that's the information you're providing. I also wrote, $30,000 for AIR funds, that's all you have? We need to do better as a city to make sure that we can support victims of domestic violence if they need emergency shelter, if they need transportation, or any other assistance. That 30K can't just be it to serve 3,500 people. So please make sure you include that in your budget ask going forward. And again, just thank you for everything that you do.
When you're last, you go fast. So I just want to say, thank you all very much for all of your hard work. I would also argue this, a lot of times when we talk about the criminal justice system, everybody wants to focus on police or the judges, and you all are an integral part of what is happening to try and keep victims safe. And I don't think that really gets said enough, people want to know about the crime stats, and who's going to jail, who's being released, what's happening with probation and parole, but making sure that men and women who've been domestically abused or being taken care of are seen as victims and getting the help that they need is a critical part of what I would argue is not only incredible work, but also contributing to making sure the city is a happy, healthier, and better place. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
One more comment by Councilmember President Moreno.
Yeah, I would be remiss if I didn't add a comment, that's probably going to get, not, not you, but me, but just to make sure when you're collecting that data, you don't keep it in leather-bound books, because it seems to be there's some confusion between what you do and magic, and science is magic, but it's real. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I, I would love to highlight that the 2024 AIR data report is available on the Health Department's website, and we will make sure to send it-
Available online.
Thank you so much. Online, thank you so much, appreciate that.
Hey, just real quick to the advocates in the back, thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you all for coming today, appreciate it.
Third order of business, presentation, Dr. Jennifer, Jennifer Avagni, Director of Health Department, and Mashawn Siddique, Deputy Director of the Health Department. A presentation by the New Orleans Health Department in honor of Breastfeeding Awareness Month, promoting awareness of breastfeeding's vital role in maternal and infant health-
Madam Clark, hang on one second. Are we, are we doing?
That's okay, let's do it, because we're going to, we have Mr. Matthews' family here, and we have a couple of other presenters, so we'll do that one last.
Okay.
Because I know that you all can't wait to talk about the St. Augustine connection with Mr. Matthews. So, Mr. Matthews, be patient with your family, we're going to do it right after this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Infant health and showcasing its wide-ranging benefits.
We appreciate y'all lumping us together, and certainly, we want to be as fast as the Honey Badger, as fast.
Good job there, Jennifer.
I think the, the really cute babies that are in this audience make this even more We're just gonna, just to start off, this is National Breastfeeding Awareness Month, and so there's a lot that we do at the Health Department, as many of you know, and so we wanted to use that. I want to thank Councilman Morel and his staff for inviting us to present here, but really, as a really quick update on all of our maternal-child health offerings. So I'm going to turn it over to Mashawn Siddique, or no, I'm sorry, Jeannie Donovan, our Deputy Director, to talk about breastfeeding.
Yeah, and I'll just be quick, I wanted to give a couple of policy updates. So breastfeeding is the optimal form of nutrition for infants. In 2022, Congress took action to protect employees who are trying to continue breastfeeding at work, and expanded protections. And a couple months ago, in June, the city took action to guarantee those protections and make it clear how employees of the city can ensure that they have those rights, and ensure supervisors know how to provide them. So the city put out Policy Number 149 earlier this summer, really documenting how employees can get those protections of a private space to pump, and reasonable break time to do it. In making sure that those spaces where employees go to pump were nice and accommodating, we undertook a renovation of five spaces, two in City Hall, second floor is still in the works, but the eighth floor is complete, one at WIC Clinic in the Lower Ninth at AP Sanchez, one at the WIC Clinic in New Orleans East, and one at Edna Pillsbury in City Hall. So these are for spaces, not only for employees, but also for visitors. If you're sitting in City Hall, City Hall all day at a hearing, in- If you're sitting in City Hall all day at a hearing and need to pump, the eighth floor is available, as well as the second floor. And we're also offering breastfeeding support and education to all city employees, just by an email to breastfeeding@neworleans.gov.
And so just sort of zooming out from breastfeeding, which we know is a critical part of infant health in their early life, you know, we want to just continue to update the public and the council on how it's not just one program, it's not just one thing, that our goal has always been to build, just as we're doing for violence prevention, to build a cohesive ecosystem of supporting family throughout the lifecycle, starting before that mom even is ready to get pregnant, before that family becomes a family, making sure she and our partner are healthy through a healthy pregnancy, a safe delivery, and then really intervening strongly in the postpartum period and continuing that intervention throughout the young life of a child and a family. And so this is not a comprehensive list, but it's pretty good of the work that we do with many, many partners all over the city and statewide as well, in order to try to create the greatest foundation so our residents and our families can thrive. Because there is no greater and higher intervention than in the life of a young family, it lasts generations. So there's a lot of things that we have. What I've highlighted in yellow are our core general-funded programs, a few of which we'll mention very briefly, and that just shows you how we take those and we leverage all kinds of other support, funding sources, federal, state, private, with our partners, to make this work in a cohesive system. But that when you take one leg out of this stool, you really threaten the whole system. So just very quickly, we'll talk about our core programs here at the Health Department as a reminder.
Yes, thank you all. Nishan Siddique, Deputy Director of Direct Service Programs. I am a certified lactation counselor, but more importantly, I am a mother of three girls who I breastfed, and I know the woes that a family goes through. I did this 23 years ago, so it was pre-Google, pre-all of the resources that families have. So I know the impact that these programs like this can have. Jeannie talked about the system-level stuff that we can do, the policies, the lactation rooms that employers provide lactation pumps through the health insurance and coverage. So all of those things are important to the lives of families. But I am really proud of the programs that we have within the Health Department. I've been doing this for 23 years. These programs have been proven to, not only within the Health Department, but nationally to show results for our families. So our first program is Healthy Start New Orleans. It's been around the city for about 25 years. We were one of the first cities to have a Healthy Start program. We have the, it's an intensive case management program. So the case managers do assessments with the families. We have 12 staff members, six of them are case managers. They're also duelers. They also have breastfeeding education. So they are going into the homes, into the streets, and making sure not only that they get to their doctor's appointments, but making sure they have transportation, that they're screening for domestic violence, that they're screening for economic insecurity, all of those things, so that the mothers, the babies, and the families actually thrive. This is a federally funded program, it's about $1.1 million. We're in the second year of that funding, but this is one of the programs that was threatening to be cut with the federal cut. So this program is important, and I'm happy that our team is really showing the value of the dollars. A couple of stats I want to highlight in the Healthy Start program with the breastfeeding is that 71% of our breastfed families are hitting the mark at 71%, and then compared, 88%, excuse me, compared to the state, that's 71%. So our program is exceeding the state. Also, 51% of those are meeting the mark of six months of breastfeeding, whereas the state is 22%. So program proven track record. The next program, Women, Infant, and Children, our WIC program, it's been around for 50 years now, proven program. It has federal and state funded. We have four sites, we're operating three. Our fourth site, once we get to capacity, we are open at Arthur Monday. So so many people think that WIC just provides infant formula, but it does such much more than infant formula. They do screening, nutritional screening for the families, and they counsel them on what kind of foods that they need to eat to better their, better their lives. We did 25,000 benefits over the last year, and that's every year we're doing about the same. And those benefits are food vouchers, so they think you can go to the grocery store and get fresh fruits and vegetables. This study, this program is studied nationally. So some of the highlights I want to point out to you, that every dollar invested into a WIC program, there's $2.48 of healthcare savings. So the babies are healthier, they're less sick. The children that are within the WIC program, they're generally healthier because they have access to foods, they have, they're meeting their nutritional requirements. And you may not know that access to WIC also means that you're accessing a breastfeeding peer counselors, and so those families, they hit their breastfeeding initiation, and they also continue to breastfeed. And of course, the families have increased fruit and vegetable consumption. The last, our newest baby on the block, Family Connects New Orleans, it is supported through general funds. It's been around since 2023. It is an evidence-based model where families are provided one to three nurse home visits, so decreasing any barriers. The nurses go into the homes, provide assessments for families around that three-week mark, but if the baby is in a NICU or the mom is sick, it may go out to the 12-week, 12-week mark. If the families don't want the nurse to come into the home, we have a Family Connect Suite at the Allen May Center, so that they can be seen there. So this one, I'm really proud of that. We've had our own local evaluator, Tulane University, to show, so we can see if the program is really working. So what we've seen thus far is that there are reduced Medicaid costs from the first nine months for mom and baby, that families are going into that OB visits. The OB visits are very important for postpartum hemorrhaging, gestational diabetes, hypertension. We got to get the moms into the apartments, which they haven't been doing. Also, getting the babies into those pediatric appointments, so they can get their vaccinations, weight checks, and things like this. Other one is the early diagnosis of postpartum depression. This is key, because we don't want families out there not knowing if they are depressed. We want them to be diagnosed and get into treatment. And with our program, we are able not only to find out if they have depression, but also get them to the right resources to get the help that they need. So since the inception of our program, we've had over 1,000 support services. And we're not just talking about health sources, we're talking resources. Of course, breastfeeding, but social support, making sure that they get job placement, because the family is mom, baby, dad, and other children in the home, making sure they get job placement, transportation as well, carbon monoxide detectors. So we bridge them to programs that are funded by the city itself, but also external resources as well. Lastly, I want to turn it back to Jeana, Jeannie, who's been leading our efforts to make this program sustainable, not just locally, but at the state as well.
Yeah, I'll just round out this slide by saying, we've been working at the state level to get insurance coverage for Family Connect's postpartum home visiting, to offset the city's costs, but also to expand into neighboring parishes and hopefully across the state. So last session, a bill passed mandating private insurance coverage of nurse home visiting, and we're working with the state Medicaid office to add it as a Medicaid-covered service, and hopefully all goes according to plan, that coverage will start in early 2027.
And so just, you know, these are our core programs. We have many, many others, some of which are targeted at very specific interventions, like aspirin in pregnancy for those at high risk of preeclampsia, or our top box food delivery to pregnant women, so that they can have healthy nutritious food during their pregnancy. But again, you know, it's a, we try to build and braid and create a real safety net, not just one program here, one program that serves certain people. These, many of these are universal, they cover every council district, they cover every zip code. And again, we're able, with a minimal investment from the city, we're able to bring down more than twice that from outside sources, and we will continue to look for every gap and fill everything we can until we know that we are serving everyone who needs to be served. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. It is so helpful that you guys are doing so much to educate people in the city of New Orleans regarding just how important early intervention and early resources are to having healthy babies and helping mothers. In particular, just the check-in, I mean, obviously, many of us up here either have friends or family, or we're parents ourselves, and we've seen the overwhelming amount of responsibility that comes with a newborn child, that without resources, sometimes being thrust upon you, it can be very, very, very overwhelming and seem kind of almost impossible. So, do Councilmembers want to comment on this?
I just want to say something.
Go ahead.
When you first started working on this, Dr. Avagnino, I was like, wow, this looks like it would be something that would be so helpful. And really, I thought that it would be hard to implement, but this goes to your leadership, to your leadership and your team's leadership of saying, we know that it's hard, this is not easy, other parishes and other cities aren't doing this, but you are always going to be the one to lead by example for better outcomes for the people of this city. And I just so very much appreciate about, about the Health Department and your team on how you're able to do this. What you are doing to do these check-ins with new moms is critical, potential at times even life-saving as well. To check in with mom, make sure that all is good with her and baby, make sure mental health-wise that things are okay, is so important, and there are too many people who are being left out with any type of resources, and they're stuck by themselves trying to figure things out, and sometimes that doesn't lead to the best outcomes. So once again, thank you so much for thinking outside the box and saying, there is a path, and we can do this. It's not going to be easy, it will be hard, but if we take it step by step, we actually can get something really substantive done, and you got it done again. Thank you.
Councilmember Jerusaleh?
Yeah, I just want to say, like, I think one of the challenges a lot of times in policy is that people want to put it into certain boxes. This is a progressive policy, this is a conservative policy. And like, really good policy that kind of intersects both, makes everybody happy, and that's exactly what you've achieved here. So if you want to take, we're caring for mothers, we're caring for babies, we're having good outcomes, we're making sure that people are growing and developing, their brains are doing the things, you've hit all those marks. And then I wrote down what you put in your presentation, which is, this is reduced Medicaid costs, cost for moms and ba, for costs for moms and babies, increased OB and Peds visits, and increased early detection of postpartum. I mean, I don't know how you can do any better than that. So I really want to applaud you for figuring out what's best, obviously, first and foremost for the babies and their mothers, but also making sure this is a program that makes so much sense. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. King.
I want to thank you for your presentation. I want to highlight or echo how important breastfeeding is to, to a child, and also equally as important to the mother. It helps the mom lose weight, it helps the mom have that skin-to-skin contact with the baby, which is so important. It's cost, it costs, it's cheaper, let me say that, than, than, than formula, whatever you, so it has a lot of benefits. So just thank you for highlighting just how important and how beneficial breastfeeding is for the parent, for the mother, and for the baby.
Real quick, just, just so, how many other parishes are doing anything comparable to this? Are you guys at the forefront of this kind of activity?
As often happens, since, you know, we do have the only local Health Department in the state, we're often the tip of the spear. So in terms of Family Connects, there are, there are four Healthy Start programs all across Louisiana. There are several WIC programs, that's pretty standard, but in terms of the postpartum home visiting, we were the first, but, but we'll tell you that the second we launched, we started all getting calls from legislators all over the state, from other hospital systems all over the state. So they were eager to do it. We know that Jefferson Parish, even if the legislature this year hadn't been really forward-thinking in past, you know, coverage and state Medicaid plan, Jefferson Parish was trying to find a way to do it, and we were actively helping them. Again, we don't, we don't like restricting it just to Orleans, we think that everybody should have this. So we're really excited, and our team, who's represented here, has been really active in saying, when this goes statewide, please, we'd love to help you figure out what works for your parish.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Green?
I would just like to also thank you for the work that you're doing, in many respects, the groundbreaking work in our state and an important issue. So just with the few words as possible, just to say thank you, and let's continue to do everything that we can to educate the public as to the benefits of breastfeeding. It's so important to recognize that it's been documented and proven, the benefits. Sometimes we just have to continue to import, I mean, to suggest to the public that they should take advantage of this and share the information, but thank you for the work that you do.
First of all, thank you. And in order to do the right work, a lot of times you have to have the right people to play the right position, to do the right work, to get the right outcome. And Nishan, Sister Siddique, whether it's at the mosque, or whether it's at that obscure place in the community, whether it's right in the middle, where you there with us during violence interruption, or sitting down telling people, put their guns down, you have always been on the forefront. So I don't know about making history, but the sisters have been making history in places where maybe people are finding their way to those places now, all of a sudden. But God bless you, and thank you for being there for our community when other people weren't. We appreciate you, Sister.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, thank you for being here today, thank you for all the work you guys do. Appreciate it.
Third, oh, Second Order of Business Presentation, Tyron Matthew, New Orleans native and recently retired player. In celebration of recently retired New Orleans Saints player, Tyron Matthews, for his contributions to the city of New Orleans, both on and off the field. Over the course of 12 NFL seasons, Matthew has won a Super Bowl with the Kansas City Chiefs and played three seasons with the New Orleans Saints. He began his football career as a standout athlete at St. Augustine High School and Louisiana State University, where he earned the nickname Honey Badger for his aggressive plays and ability to force turnovers. Matthew's legacy includes his commitment to youth mentorship, community service, and representing New Orleans with pride throughout his career.
That was quite an introduction, actually, that's it all. But I'm going to ask Mr. Julius Feltes to bring our honoree forth, and how about a couple of family members come sitting next to Tyron, Tyron Matthew for a second? Who wants to come? I see a young baby.
Hello.
Oh, he's good to him.
Is that his personal baby?
Right, right. Right, Loxie Moore. Tyron, Tyron, I can't tell you how excited council members Jerusaleh and King are, because their teams, Archbishop Shaw and Jesuit, have the opportunity to play it out so often. So, yeah. This is an exciting time. Today, we recognize a citizen of our city who has promoted our city so well in many respects. But you know something? My remarks are going to be this special proclamation, and then we'll go to our council members before we have you to speak. So whereas Tyron Matthew, affectionately known as the Honey Badger, was born in the city of New Orleans in 1992 on May 13th, and whereas Tyron Matthew was raised by his grandparents, and after his father, grandfather passed away, he was adopted by his uncle, Tyrone Matthew, and aunt Sheila Matthew, and whereas Tyron Matthew is a proud product of St. Augustine High School, the Purple Knights, where he earned national recognition as a four-star recruit and was ranked highly as the number 13 cornerback in the entire nation in 2010. And whereas Tyron Matthew continued his athletic excellence at LSU, Louisiana State University, where in 2011, he was awarded the Chuck Bednerick, Bednerick Award, named SEC Defensive Player of the Year, and earned consensus, consensus All-American and First Team All-SEC honors. And whereas Tyron Matthew was selected by the Arizona Cardinals in the third, in the third round of the 2013 NFL Draft, and after a year with the Houston Texans in 2018, he joined the Kansas City Chiefs, helping lead them to victory in the Super Bowl of 2020. Whereas Tyron Matthew returned home to New Orleans, we are so glad he did, in 2022, and played his three final seasons of his career with the New Orleans Saints. Whereas Tyron Matthew, yeah, Saints. Oh, that's right, that's why we have these right now, right? Whereas Tyron Matthew, over his career, earned three First Team All-Pro selections, 2015, 19, 2020, and was a three-time Pro Bowl honoree in 2015, 2020, and 2021. And whereas Tyron Matthew was officially, has officially announced his retirement from the National Football League, concluding a remarkable 12-season career. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the city council, the city of New Orleans recognizes Tyron "Divine" Matthew at my request, signed by all seven members of the council, and those are my remarks, because I think that it sums it up very well. Thank you for all that you've done, we are so pleased. all that you've done. We are so pleased that you're here today. We are honored on this day, Tyron Matthew Day, in the city of New Orleans.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
We're going to start to my left with Jesuit.
Yeah, well, I wore, I wore, I guess you laugh, but I wore blue and white because I knew this was going to happen, but I got my LSU tie on. Um, you know, look, I went to, I went to Texas undergrad, so there was nothing better than watching you whip up in the Cotton Bowl in 2011 on A&amp;M, which had to be one of the best games. I, I, you know, at almost 50 years old, I've watched a lot of college football at this point, and you had to be one of the most electric players I've ever seen in my entire life. And we just knew, like, all right, Tyron's on the field, like, something's going to happen. And it was on special teams. It was on defense. And it was just so incredible to watch you play. And then, of course, like, as you got to the pros, like, oh, this New Orleans guy is doing such a good thing. And then I, I, I can't imagine from your perspective what it had to be like to end your career with your home team. Um, I think as special, though, as you are as, as a player, I, I'm really just been so much impressed by how much you want to pour back into the community, too. And I know how important it is with your foundation and the work that you're doing, particularly with kids. And so, we're all going to celebrate you as a player, um, and you've earned that right. But I also want to make sure we celebrate you as a person, because, you know, the things that you've done in the city have not gone unnoticed. And not saying the fact that you went to St. Aug. Um, we, we, we want to recognize what a major contributor you are to, to being here, to everything you've done for the kids that are here. And being here has really meant a lot to us, to lift our spirits. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Jerusaleh. Councilmember Leslie Harris.
Well, that's, that's a hard one to beat, but I just want to say thank you so much for being here today and everything that you've done for our community. I remember years ago when I heard Honey Badger, I was like, what, what's a Honey Badger? And I can tell you that my friends who graduated are alum of LSU, all of the Saints fans are so very jealous that I'm sitting here right now, um, with your family, celebrating you today. Um, just keep up the good work. I know you have great things ahead of you, just like you had in the past, but just, just keep up and, and thank you for just being a fabulous member of the New Orleans community.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember King, Archbishop Shaw.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. Uh, Mr. Matthew, thank you, uh, just for all that you are doing for our, for our youth. I remember, um, you in high school had some guys who coached high school, like, man, look out for this kid. He's not the biggest, not the strongest, not the fastest, but he just finds a way to make plays. I'm like, okay, I, I, I'm a big college football fan. So lo and behold, you go to LSU and it's like, that's what I was telling you about. That's what made all them plays. And they call him the Honey Badger. So I Google Honey Badger and I, and I, and I look at the YouTube videos of an actual Honey Badger. And it's this, it's this animal. It's not the biggest, not the strongest, not the fastest, but it backs down from nothing. And it, it, it fights lions and it fights, uh, the biggest animal, biggest animals. It fights multiple animals, but it just, its tenacity is ferocious. Like, that's, that's how you play. And, uh, I saw you play two games that stood out to me, so several games, but two that stood out to me was the West Virginia game. Uh, Geno Smith, I was rooting for, uh, for West Virginia in that game. And like, man, this dude was making me look bad because he was all over the field. And, um, the SEC Championship against Georgia, maybe 2010. Yeah, I got married. Like, the week before, I got married. Like, man, let's do it again. He's returning punts for kick, for touchdowns. He's stripping the ball and them, like, a true, just what we call a ball player, just a ball player out of, out of, out of Willie Hall. Um, so your, your, at, your accolades on the field speak for themselves. Like, Councilmember Jerusaleh said, uh, more importantly, what you're doing for our kids and, and showing them, uh, what they can be on and off the field. I think that's, that's much, much more important than anything anyone could do on the field, just pour back into the kids coming behind them. So thank you for that and thank you, um, just being who you are and pouring back into our community. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember King. Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you. And, and I think it was after that West Virginia game, uh, that I think you started to get that Honey Badger name, right? Okay. So, uh, I think the Honey Badger should be thanking you for, for making the Honey Badger famous, because, uh, no one knew what the heck a Honey Badger was, as you can tell, until you started getting called the Honey Badger. And I think all of us ended up Googling the Honey Badger. The other thing too interesting about a Honey Badger is that even though it is compact in size, it is so much stronger than its size, too. So I thought that that was interesting, too. I also want to mention that, you know, you have made Councilmember Green stay possibly here, because
Purple.
I mean, he is always talking about St. Aug, no matter what. We hear about St. Aug every single day. But the fact that you are here today as a St. Aug alum, Councilmember King has been talking about this for a while, for a while. So thank you for being here. Obviously, it's great to be able to celebrate you. And thank you for all that you do for our community. I know that you have a lot of the different football camps and the Heart of the Badger, uh, camps that you, you put together. That's really important. I love it that you're an athlete who isn't just, you know, moved on, but you're also helping younger athletes excel and, and be great athletes, just like you are. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Councilmember Moreno. Councilmember Thomas.
Man, first of all, I don't know how, uh, any of us could be more proud. Uh, I really don't. I've never focused on a Honey Badger. Uh, I've always focused on that Hall of Fame young man. And the Honey Badger is obvious. We, we got, we got to see him on TV. Uh, we got to see him in the Super Bowl. But you were Hall of Fame at navigating these streets in New Orleans. You, you were Hall of Fame, because, you know, all the Matt Twos, that's really what they, that's the old time, is Matt Two.
Right, right.
You know, when you see one, you see all of them, because you know what tree they come from. I, I don't think there was ever any doubt for people who know you, I mean, because those who, who saw you, you could always run faster, jump high. They, they don't know you'd have been an All-Star in any sport you played. So for people to just focus on a Honey Badger, I think, I don't think it understands the DNA you inherited, too. But the thing I'm most proud of is to watch the way you navigated life and set an example for this little hard-knit town here, that you can go through it, you can be of it, but you ain't never got to forget where you come from, but you can show every little boy and girl who come from where we come from was possible. So, yeah, the Honey Badger's supposed to be in the Hall of Fame, but you always been in our Hall of Fame. Because you, right now, looking at you now, from where you been, you, what my daddy used to say, is the first and last thing in the Bible. Amen. We love you, Papa.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Thomas. Julius Feltes, Senior Advisor to the Mayor. Who's that young person sitting next to you? No, right here, right here, Tyron. And look, Councilmember Green, we had the opportunity to meet with the mayor this morning. And, uh, I told, uh, Tyron, I said, man, I said, I don't know how you are. You look like you're about 20-something years old. And I looked at the family, a beautiful family, and they have wonderful DNA. Uh, but I'm absolutely thrilled to be here on behalf of the mayor. Uh, this young man has done a great job and has done outstanding contributions to the city of New Orleans, not only on the field, but off the field as well. And because of that, the mayor presented him this morning with the key to the city of New Orleans. And it says, and I'll just read just a portion of it, it is said, "With great pride that we honor Tyron Matthew, not only for his remarkable football achievements, but for his lifelong dedication to mentorship, philanthropy, and the spirit of New Orleans. As he begins the next chapter, the city of New Orleans celebrates a legacy defined by heart, hope, and hometown pride." And it is signed by the mayor of the city of New Orleans, the Honorable Latoya Cantrell. Ladies and gentlemen, Tyron Matthew! And we also have Judge Nicole Sheppard, Chief Judge of Civil District Court, would like to make a brief presentation as well.
Thank you. Thank you. So, congratulations again. Uh, I just remember you there as obviously a St. Aug. Uh, so I'll just be brief as well. And thank you, councilmembers, for the opportunity and, uh, Councilman Green for such a wonderful, uh, presentation and idea. Congratulations on the remarkable impact you've achieved. Your extraordinary football career speaks volumes, but what truly sets you apart is your unwavering commitment to community service and the impactful work of the Tyron Matthew Foundation. From your formative years at St. Augustine to your exceptional college tenure at LSU, you have consistently harnessed your platform for a greater purpose. Through your foundation, you have unlocked opportunities for underserved you throughout our city and throughout our country, and provided essential resources to families in need. And your legacy off the field is just as profound as your impact on the field. Growing up in the New Orleans Seventh Ward, you have faced significant challenges. Your resilience transformed those obstacles into a driving force filled with purpose and passion. The same fierce demonstrated that earned you the nickname Honey Badger on the field fuels your mission to uplift our community. From your high school star to college All-American to Super Bowl champion, you have never wavered in your commitment to honoring the city of New Orleans. Your deep-seated dedication to service and your ability to lead with compassion make you a true inspiring role model beyond the realm of football. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to inspire and create meaningful change on the field. You embody the very essence of what it means to be in New Orleans. You have played with passion, flair, determination, and competitive resilience, and that is indeed natural in New Orleans. Thank you and congratulations. We're proud of you.
You hear will be that, but Tyron Matthew.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Got a speech here written. Get me, bear with me. Uh, I stand here today humble, honored, and deeply grateful. I want to extend a sincere thank you to council, to councilmember Eugene Green, the entire New Orleans City Council, and the entire city of New Orleans for this amazing honor to be recognized with Tyron Matthew Day. And to receive the key is something I've never imagined being possible growing up here in New Orleans. This is more than just an honor for me. It's a true blessing. And just how, it's, and it's just another reminder of how special, uh, this city truly is. New Orleans is where my journey started. I grew up here, uh, learned life lessons here. I walked the halls of St. Augustine, this guy, where discipline, faith, and brotherhood shaped me as a young man. I had the privilege of carrying those lessons to LSU, representing not just Baton Rouge and LSU, but the entire After three stops in my professional journey, by the grace of God, my path led me back home to finish my career where it all started. The opportunity to wear black and gold was one of the greatest blessings of my life, to play for the team I grew up watching, in the city that raised me. Words cannot describe how special it was to play here and to serve as team captain. I want to sincerely thank Mama B., Miss Gail Benson, uh, Mickey Loomis, and the entire New Orleans Saints organization for allowing me the chance to fulfill a lifelong dream. It has been well documented that my path hasn't always been smooth. I've faced many challenges, setbacks, and moments where I had to learn the hard way. But I wouldn't change anything in my journey, because every obstacle, every test of fate shaped me into the man I am today. Growing up in New Orleans taught me how to rise above the challenges and come out on top. New Orleans is more than just my hometown. It's my heart. It's the rhythm, the food, the faith, the resilience, and most of all, the people. We've been through so much as a city, yet we always rise together. To be recognized by the city that has given me so much is truly overwhelming. I would be remiss if I did not thank my family, my brothers, my friends, my parents, my mom, Kendra, my teammates, coaches, fans, and everyone along the way, uh, who believed in me. I want to say thank you to this commu- community for reminding me every single day why it is that I'm proud to call New Orleans home. No matter where life takes me in the next act of life after football, I'll always carry New Orleans in my heart. And I hope I made you all proud. God bless you all and God bless the great city of New Orleans. Who dat?
I'll tell you all what. I don't think that I can say anything else other than, who dat? Who dat? Come on, coun- councilmembers, we're third, so there's no other order of business. Let's come in the front for a picture. And we can maybe read ordinances on first reading while we're doing all this. Come on, we did that? What, I missed that? Come on, family members, come on up and, um, let's stand around Tyron.
All right, members, all we have to do is adjourn. So I'll make a motion to adjourn. It's been seconded by Councilmember Harris. All in favor? Aye, six yays, no nays. We're adjourned. Thank you. Take your time taking pictures.